...of attorneys, either the one you spoke to or myself.
I don't need an attorney.
You said you spoke with Larry. I don't know what that means.
Oh, he's the guy at Considerate Services.
I understand. He's not an attorney either. I don't want to get into a contest with you. I'm just saying, in order to do it, the board's opinion is you need permission verbal, that's all.
Okay, well, who do we take it to? Want to go have a meeting with Mayor Koch tomorrow?
With who?
Mayor Koch? Who do we talk to?
Knock the chip off your shoulder, will you, pal? I'm just trying to stick to procedure.
The first time I went up to the zoning thing, I got the same sort of reaction from Marty Ankers. You'll be more relaxed the more I come up here. I'm gonna come up here every month and videotape every meeting.
I've done it in front of enough cameras as planning director.
Well, I'm just saying, every meeting for the, just once a month, I actually called someone from the planning department, and I told them that I was gonna be coming up here.
And who did you speak to there?
I don't know. Maybe it's that, who answers the phone when you call the planning department?
I'm one of the planners. Did you call our office? We just wanted to know, you know, where we'd be in videotape. We usually...
I did. I called like, I called him like a month ago.
Oh, okay.
I was counseling Tom Mucci right here. I'm just trying to run right here if he's ever seen me.
That's fine.
I own the domain name Quincy.com. I'm a reporter.
Okay.
Freedom of the press.
Absolutely.
I'm also reorganizing the Quincy taxpayers.
Okay.
I vote in Quincy. I live in Quincy.
No, 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 no. It's not that we're a problem with it. We usually, before someone videotapes meetings, we get some kind of a notice. But it's fine. It's fine.
It's, it's definitely, you know, I don't know what goes on at planning.
Yeah.
Nobody does.
Very excited.
Okay. It happens once a month, okay?
Oh, it's fine.
Um, pretty much this, it's just really funny.
No, 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 no. There's no, there's no, there's no issue with it. We just typically get someone.
I got, I got, I guess I got this check I might hold, which I wasn't, wasn't sure I was. I'm just, I'm just not afraid.
No, no, no. There's no reason to be afraid. We're not, we're not talking about that.
That's what I find. I find that, I find that to be frustrating, like, like I'm not even sure, um, what exactly his name was or whatever.
Yep.
I see all the people here. I was at the zoning meeting last night. There weren't many people, but so far this year, I videotaped every single city council meeting, and I have videotaped every single zoning meeting.
Hey, Larry. How are you? Good?
So...
Okay. Um, just, if you, um, it's fine. We just usually get some kind of a notice, but it's, we just wondered who you were, because we didn't know if you were from Key Wait TV.
Isn't that, do you read, tell me if this is an open meeting law?
There is an open meeting law, absolutely. But typically, um, to be videotaped or audiotaped, I mean, uh, the chairman needs to give permission.
Okay.
It's part of the open meeting law in Massachusetts.
Okay. But I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna tell you that I'm right. He's wrong.
Sure. No, that's fine.
But he can, he can, he had a...
So you're with Quincy.com?
I'm independent.
Yeah.
I'm just like a human being, a taxpayer, um, so...
All right. We just wanted to see what the organization was doing with videotape.
I personally, myself.
Okay.
I'm running for mayor.
Okay.
In four years.
Okay.
And I'm preparing really early.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Lots and lots. Jim Batsy?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, all. I'd like to call, I'd like to call a meeting of the planning board for, you know, 13th of October. That's the call zone.
I'm a calendar person.
Excuse me. Thank you. Member Barry present.
Member Camiso present.
Member Glenn present.
Member me present. Thank you. Uh, the first item on our agenda are the, uh, planning board minutes from, um, March 9th, 2016. And the board has all had an opportunity to review.
I have no comment and I'll raise a motion to approve.
Motion to amend is a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item is a continuing public hearing for 1073 Hancock Street. Site plan special permit, planning board page 2015 dash 32. We have a, a communication from the attorney.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
They have it in their pocket.
Okay. Okay. Um, it's a letter that was addressed to Mr. Batsy's planning director, dated April 1st, 2016. A request for withdrawal without prejudice. Don't you know our rock representative, Hope Turned Trading USA, may provide to its application for a special permit for its proposed 36 room hotel at 1073 Hancock Street? Please accept this letter as a formal request by the applicant to withdraw the above matter for consideration by the City of Quincy Planning Board without prejudice. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Just through the Rock Street plan. I need a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. For a second to the motion.
A second.
Gotcha. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is a continued public hearing for 151 Granite Street Site Plan Special Permit, a planning board case 2015 dash 37, continued from a February 10th, 2016 meeting. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. My law office is at 21 McGrath Highway, and I represent Anton Chella, who is the applicant to this case. In our last public hearing, uh, when we left off, there were questions about the site, the ledge on the site, having a report from a geotechn engineer, and also requesting information about blasting, and the amount of material that needs to be removed from the site, and how long that will take, and number of trucks. And, uh, the senior, we have that information for you, so I'd like to just dive right into that. Uh, first person to speak tonight will be Michael Joyce, uh, professional engineer from Joyce Associates. He'll talk about whatever changes were made to the site plan since the last time you saw it. Also with us is Arthur Chu, the architect, Tom Fennick from McPhail Associates, also a professional engineer, was our geotechnical expert. And also we have Justin Rolston and Andy DuFor, who have made drilling and blasting. We'll talk about, uh, the procedure and the process of how this site would be cleared and if it's true. I'll start with Michael Joyce. Thank you.
Mr. Chris, my name is Michael Joyce, Joyce Consulting Group. I'm here for the project. I'll go over the project briefly, 'cause I know you're all, all familiar with it. It's a proposed 32-unit residential building, uh, with two garage levels. First garage level is access to Granite Street. The second garage level is access through Parker Street and the driveway here. A lot of the concerns raised last time were about the alignment of the driveway, the width of the driveway from the garage opening on the Granite Street, so as to avoid any sort of queuing on Granite Street. Uh, as a result of those conversations, we shifted the lobby north and centered the driveway, made the opening 24 feet wide in order to allow basically direct access in and out of the building. Uh, we've also removed, I believe there's an overhead door, and prior, we've removed the overhead door so there'd be no plague and waiting to, the door to open or close. In addition, we've al- also added a sidewalk up, uh, Parker Street. Uh, I know the residents have voiced concern about not taking away any more Parker Street than already, or what little is there now. So, we've, we follow the edge of the travel way, and unfortunately, the sidewalk does fall on the applicant's, um, property. However, that'll be, uh, resolved with the needs of acumen through the city. In addition to those changes, the traffic engineer had a couple of concerns. Uh, we've added some driving to the, to the street, uh, to the driveway. Has no parking signs along the edge of Parker Street on either side. And also added a, she requested a stop sign at Granite Street and Parker Street. Uh, we haven't shown that in the plan. We want more information from her. She had asked to replace the existing sign. We don't believe it's a sign there, so we just want a location from her. But we're more than willing to put that sign there. In addition to those changes, we've also coordinated utilities. We've had a hydrant flow test performed. Mechanical engineers sized all the, the water and sewer sizing, uh, so that's finalized. Uh, the mechanical engineer has also verified that there's enough pressure and capacity off of the Granite Street main to service, uh, the building. In addition to those items, we also performed some substantial geotechnical investigation. As Chris Hackett had mentioned, Tom Fennick from McPhail Associates is here, and I'd like to turn it over to him to expand on that. Unless you have any civil questions you'd like to answer now.
As Mike mentioned, my name is Tom Fennick. I work for McPhail Associates. I'm a geotechnical engineer. Um, I was recently engaged by a proponent to, uh, take some sort of investigation work at the site and, uh, to provide some preliminary recommendations for, um, how he's gonna go about, um, taking on this excavation, uh, for this, for this building. So the investigation that we did initially was just to observe the site, observe the rock, take an assessment of, um, the properties of the rock itself, look at the jointing, the points of weakness, and that sort of thing. Get a handle on, on that. Then the second thing, which is a little bit more basic, is we came in with, um, main drilling and blasting provided a rock drill, to profile the top of the rock. The deal of the site where the building's gonna be placed is, um, covered with soil. It's not all rock everywhere. Um, there's a lot of rock towards the back of the site where you can see the off-ramps, but where the existing residences, there's a lot of soil. There's about 10, you know, eight to 10 feet of soil over and over the rock. So, it's important to understand those things in order to, you know, go about coming up with a design for the removal of the rock. As far as the rock removal itself goes, um, it's pretty obvious, um, that this is the way to remove this rock in the most efficient manner. The safest manner is blasting. There's other methods that are available, including, uh, using pneumatic cameras, hole rams. These methods, they take a long time, a very long time. This rock is granite. It's so hard that I don't really think it's even feasible to remove the rock in this manner, and would cause a lot of nuisance and disturbance. Blasting is by far the fastest way to go about removing the rock.
Can you speak louder, please?
Excuse me?
Can you speak louder?
No, no problem. Um, so, uh, we prepare specifications for the removal of the rock, and in the specifications, we, we put in, um, vibration levels from published standards that the blaster is to adhere to. And, um, main drilling and blasting is gonna speak more about this, but they actually designed the blast to conform with these standards for vibrations. And, um, you know, by state law, you have to, you know, adhere to these levels. And, um, the vibration levels, uh, to make sure that these levels are being achieved, the levels are monitored at every blast with, um, one or more portable seismic measuring units. But main drilling and blasting, they're experts in blasting. They do a lot of work in the area, and they'll speak towards, uh, the method of the rock removal itself. One of the things we will do, though, is, um, we're gonna make sure that the rock's slope is stable. When we make the excavation for the rock, um, there are some things you need to consider to make sure that the rock excavation itself is stable. Along Parker Avenue, it's gonna be a near vertical, Parker Street is gonna be a near vertical rock cut. So that needs to be stabilized, and you need to make sure that that rock cut is stable. And, um, the way the proponent's gonna go about doing that is by spending some extra money to pre-drill all around the perimeter of the excavation to create a plane of weakness so that when the blasting takes place, um, the rock is pre-broken at that predetermined location. And, um, then all the rock breakage occurs within that pre-drilled line. Before that is pre-drilled, there's, um, what we call, um, pre-excavation dowels that we're gonna drill in. Just behind this, what we call a line drill to stabilize the rock, um, in advance of the excavation. And then as the excavation proceeds, it's, it's brought down, the higher parts are gonna be brought down in two lifts. And once the first lift is exposed, um, the rock face is evaluated for stability. Um, if there's any areas of instability, those are addressed with rock bolts. We tie the rock together. With granite, um, especially the granite you see in Quincy, it's, um, it's pretty massive. We call it massive material. In other words, there aren't a lot of breaks in it. There's not a lot of fractures in it. Not a lot of jointing in it, so it tends to be fairly stable in itself. But nonetheless, um, the rock face is evaluated as it's brought down to make sure that there aren't some areas that need to be, um, bolted with rock bolts. And the last thing we do is we address the drainage for the building itself. This rock excavation, uh, there could be some water that seeps into the excavation. I don't expect that to be, um, too significant, because if you look at the lowest side of the, um, of the site, you don't really see too much water flowing out of the rock, um, which indicates to me that the rock itself, um, probably won't weep too much. But in the event that it does, there's gonna be a drainage system that's provided for the foundations. It will divert the water into it and wicked away from the building itself to keep it off of the streets and affecting, you know, the properties. So, I think with that, uh, you know, with main drilling and blasting, it's gonna really talk about the details of how the rock's gonna be removed.
Excuse me. Ready for program? So any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Especially about the blasting process, and I think of Kelly, you've got, uh, the chairman.
Good evening. My name's Andy DuFor. This is Justin Rolston. We're with main drilling and blasting. And, um, we're Maine. We started in Maine in 1966, and we've since grown, so the name is stuck. But, uh, we are local. Our regional office is in Milford, Massachusetts, and we have two explosive storage sites in Massachusetts. Uh, so 151 Granite Street, um, this drawing here, if everybody can see it, but the red area there depicts where we expect blasting or rock removal to have to occur. It's pretty much, uh, over the whole site that's been designed. Uh, what goes into the blasting and, um, how we're regulated? I brought this, this pamphlet here. There's several of them I could leave behind, but this is released by the Department of Fire Safety. Department of Fire Safety, so this isn't something our company puts out.
We do have staff, those on the window, if anybody wants to take them.
Okay, great, great. So this is by the people who regulate us. That's who releases. So it's a lot of good information for homeowners. If you have questions, where to get them answered, refer to this pamphlet, and, uh, and I'm sure you'll, you'll find the right direction. But, um, when we look at a site, and especially a site like this, where, um, you know, we're taking out this rock in Parker Street right here, and we have these dwellings around, we do a lot of urban work. And, um, when we do this, the first thing we do is, is, is pre-planted. Uh, the, the first thing we have to do is, is figure out the radius of pre-blast surveys. What this line represents and what the regulation states is that we have to do a pre-blast inspection for every home or structure within 250 feet of the closest loaded bore hole. So that's what this line represents here, so that determines who we offer pre-blast surveys to. Once that's done, we have to look at the rock and, uh, and where the closest home is. And that's what's gonna determine what we call a blast design. It determines how we, we drill our pattern of holes and the amount of explosives that can go in those holes. We have to keep the vibration level to, uh, to two inches per second, is what the state regulation says. And how that regulation was developed, um, the U.S. Bureau of Mines did quite a few studies. Um, they actually, in old mining towns, they'd, they'd actually blow up the town, and they'd measure the vibration of homes and where damage was caused. And they determined that, um, it's construction material of coarse hair and plaster, um, the old construction material, you'd get visual cracks, not structural, but visual at four inches per second. So what the regulators did is they cut that in half, and we're allowed two inches per second. Um, so that's how we determine a safe design that's gonna be safe for the neighboring homes and structures. And, um, and also the good thing about that is, is that's determined by the closest structure. So wherever the closest home is, we have to design a 100% safe blast for that home. And then beyond the home, that, uh, vibration in the earth is actually gonna decay. It's gonna reduce for every doubling of the distance, it's gonna go down a third. So you're gonna have a completely safe blast for the closest structure, and then the vibration dissipates at a very, uh, fast rate beyond that. So, so really what you would expect to see when we showed up on site is, um, your first, there'd be a drill on site. Um, they have to drill the holes in the ground first, and it was that, once that happens, uh, basically the, the daily activity, um, for one, if you live in the neighborhood and you want a notification, if you want a, a call in a half an hour, 15 minutes before the blast, uh, we can make that happen. It would come from our office. It's not something that's in the regulations, but we can, we can, uh, anybody that wants a call ahead, and the pre-blast surveyor who goes out and does all the surveys will ask if you'd like a, a notification. So either by text, email, or phone, we can call ahead of time, so we like to avoid any surprises. Uh, so you, so before a blast, uh, there'll be signs out, um, in the area of blast zone ahead. Um, there'll be a, a sign that'll have our series of whistles. Um, five whistles, or three long whistles would indicate a five-minute warning. So we sound three long whistles before we blast. Um, and then one minute before the, uh, before the shot, you hear two whistles. And then the blast would go off, and there'd be one horn, and that horn's gonna indicate all clear, um, the blast zone is safe. What's gonna happen is we're gonna have a, a site security plan. Before the blast goes off, we're gonna have sentries placed in, uh, any area of, uh, egress or anywhere somebody come in, and everybody will have a radio and a direct line of communication that be communicating with each other. So make sure the blast zone is safe, um, before the shots go off. And another, um, a layer of protection for the vibration, uh, before we shoot, we're gonna put out what are called seismographs. Probably have, we're regulated to have one with the closest structure, but as a company, we like to surround the blast zone. We'll probably have three, um, in three points here. Uh, so we'll actually have a seismograph that's gonna measure that vibration in the ground, or measure the vibration at the homes. And, um, after we shoot each day, um, daily, there'll be a representative from the Quincy Fire Department. It's called a fire detail. They'll be on site with us, and they have to collect that data from us at the end of the day to make sure that we're within compliance. So, there's, uh, we're, we're highly regulated. It's a highly regulated industry. And, um, like I said, if you, if you look at these pamphlets, there's, there's a set of standards we have to adhere to, to, um, to make sure that the blast is safe and goes out without incident. Uh, to speak to quantities, um, this design here, after we went out and probed the site, we found there's 11,300 cubic yards for this design. We assume, or not assume, but by, um, our production rates, we think it's gonna take about a month to do the blasting. And beyond the blasting, um, we're anticipating two months of, of trucking, to truck the material out. And I believe, uh, I've hit the, the high points that I wanted to, uh, give to, if there's any questions.
One more question.
How many blasting events would there be?
There would typically be one a day, um, possibly two. We like to keep it as minimal as possible per day. Uh, where we have, um, smaller events getting started, see out in these areas here, it'd probably be, be two, because they're gonna be smaller. But, um, but not smaller vibration-wise, but aerial-wise, um, just because the work's gonna be restrictive. But, um, we'd like to keep it to, to one a day, hopefully at a regular time.
Could I ask?
Okay.
Excuse me. And then, in the, the radius?
Yes.
That you have there, what, what's the activity level, um, right before a blast? Are, are cars not going up and down Granite Street?
Traffic will have to be stopped.
So traffic stopped, no debris?
Yeah.
And, and so how far ahead of the blast, before those whistles start sounding, do you shut down, um, traffic that's being accessed?
Well, the traffic on Granite Street would be as minimal interruption as, as possible, because the blast is instantaneous. It's, yeah. So, it's once those five, the five whistles, that's typically, you start, you know, getting, getting people in place. The goal is to, to be as safe as possible, to not have anybody in the blast zone, but especially with traffic stoppages, to disrupt as minimal as possible.
Wait, um, I have a couple, I have a couple questions. How long is a blast typically? Are you talking seconds, or is it sort of minutes?
It's minutes. It's seconds. It's milliseconds, the actual event.
Okay. The, the loud bursts is, are, you know?
Yeah, what, what you're hearing, it's not, the, the blast isn't going off all at once. Each series of blast holes goes off milliseconds apart. We call it timing. And that timing is what controls the vibration. So within that blast, you may have, if it's a 30-hole shot, you have 30 mini blasts. They're going, bruh, bruh, bruh. And what you're hearing is each hole going off at once, and that's, we create an area of relief. And so each hole will relieve behind it, and that gives the vibration the path of least resistance and a place to go.
Two more questions. I, I believe within the red circle, there's a, a senior facility up?
Here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you, the, do you have that special consideration for that facility, considering the residents of it, in terms of, again, communications and?
It's communication. It boils down to communication, getting the goods out of the ground, getting over there. And, um, it'll all start with a pre-blast surveyor giving notification. But once we actually make a presence on site, we like to go around, let people know we're, we're in town, you know, and what's, what's, what to expect, what to happen. And at that point, actually doing the liaisons to make sure these folks aren't surprised by a blast. And part of that is that call ahead, if people want the call aheads, you know?
Last question. Um, have you, um, done, gone through this process elsewhere in Quincy? Is this, um?
Yeah, we've done quite a bit of work in Quincy. We did not do this. I've heard some, I've heard some, uh, stories about this, but, uh, you know, I don't remember, um, specifically with the last job we did, uh, you've just, has it been the last two or three years?
We were on the highway, oh, two years ago.
Yeah. Yeah.
We work in, uh, you know, tight communities all over Massachusetts.
So you've done these types of?
Yeah.
Of, of processes with the, within residential?
Yes. We're currently doing one as well, so it's 30 feet deep. It's a, it's a residential home with two sub-basements with neighbors right on each side. It's the same method of construction, um, which Tom spoke about with the perimeter control, controlling the, the back frame.
Construction barrels, rock engines, we're doing all of that, but almost exactly, very, very similar. Distances are even a little bit tighter than this.
I follow a question from Mr. Camiso. The elderly project on Granite, um, you can do a pre-blast survey, okay? That goes for the, the powers to be there. You're gonna have, uh, it's an awful lot of elderly people. They're older people, excuse me. I'm one of them now. And I don't think that they're gonna totally understand it, and plus, notification of a pre-blast survey isn't gonna be much for them at all. And maybe even, they may not even hear the alarms, okay? And I don't know what steps you can take in order to make sure that everybody within that building much advanced knows, knows about it, or, or there's someone there from you or from, of the company to explain what's going on. Because I just think it's, um, it's a major concern. It's a sizable building. Not taking it away from the rest of the residents and everything, but, you know, you gotta, kind of, a large number of people in one fixed building.
I agree. I think it starts with finding a key person that we could find that could help us reach out to those people. You know, there's gotta be somebody in that, in the home here that we can, um, that we can work with to educate them and let them know. And you're right, they probably won't hear, they probably won't hear the horns, you know? What those horns are really designed for, and what the regulation states, is for the, for the workmen in the actual work zone. That's where they need to be audible, so they may not, they may not hear if they're inside, their windows are closed. So finding that level of communication that we're talking about is very important.
And the, and the other question I had, um, more of, the vibration, um, with surety and Bureau of Mines studies, that vibration will carry beyond the 250-foot, um, limits, if you will?
Yeah, the vibration, well, it'll decay. It'll depend on, uh, it'll, where, where the vibration actually pans out is, is gonna depend, for one, what the ground constant is here. We have to determine that. So we start with a very conservative blast design to see how the ground's gonna react to it, and from there, we adjust. But, but this line isn't where it, it stops. It's, it's gonna stop basically where, uh, where, where the earth tells it to. But we have to be limited, not at this line, but at the closest structure to a certain tolerance. We can't exceed two inches per second. And beyond that, it's gonna decay, for every doubling of the distance, it'll decay a third until it, until it dies out.
So, so what happens if, uh, so what if happens? So what happens if, so what if happens if it goes beyond this 250-foot radius, and Mrs. Jones's house is impacted, and she hasn't had a survey?
The, so the complaint process, I think if that happens, and somebody in or beyond the 250 feet, is they go down to fire prevention, to the fire department, and they would, would hopefully come and contact us on site, but then, the official process is to fill out a blasting complaint form at the fire department, which then we have to respond to.
And again, Mrs. Jones contends that the damage done, she never had a pre-blast survey, how do you address that?
One, we're going to, we're going to do what's called a post-blaster, even though there wasn't a pre-done, we're going to go in and evaluate the home, and look at what damage the claimant is reporting. Then what's going to happen is because we've got, we've got the three seismographs that discuss out around the site, so we've got information, if Mrs. Jones was here, and we've recorded information here, we have the data, and then we can extrapolate from here to here with industry standard calculations, to see what the vibration would have been here.
So Mrs. Jones at all, okay, will have protection?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Sean, please.
How often have you had those complaints?
Blasting complaints?
Yeah.
I mean-
Blasting, I'll call the hours for blast knowledge, where you did do a pre-survey or your survey was wrong, and somebody has to pay the cost.
There's, I mean, there's post-blaster complaints, I mean, they can be up to three-quarters of a mile away, like people know you're in town, you definitely get them, we respond, we respond to everyone by sending the survey, this is called their safety, they go out and evaluate, and then from there, if it's a legitimate claim, it goes to the insurance company.
Any other questions, I'm sorry, just one more. One is, when you're removing the rock post blast, is there be room to put trucks on the site, or will the trucks be loaded on Granite Street or on Parker?
No, I think they'd have to come in here for, for the cuts pretty low, I would think that's the area that would be loaded, the excavator would be sitting up high on the pile, and they come in and load them off Granite Street.
Perfect. And one final question, going back to, up there talking about getting the site ready for blasting, to kind of visualize it from a public safety point of view, so you have somebody with a visual of every part of the site, every ingress and egress, so that you can make sure that, you don't have kids, or anybody running from the woods or whatnot, I don't know, with somebody they would see everywhere before that blast goes off?
One hundred percent, it's part of our pre-job planning, we actually have a formal, it gets put down on paper, what the site security plan will be, what sentry will be at what location, how the communication will be, whether it's radio, cell phones, making sure we have enough personnel to do it, if we don't, it's a pretty small site, so we will with the blast crew, if we didn't, we utilize the site contractor, you know, the fire detail, become part of that site security plan, it's very important.
So there are some businesses in that blast zone, how will they affect the impact of the lease, be able to continue operating, or?
Yeah, these guys over here, most definitely, yeah, stay with the grocery store, yeah, yeah, yes, it shouldn't be an effect to the business.
Any other questions on board? Deputy Chief Jackson is here from the fire department.
My name is Joe Jackson.
Please come on, Joe.
I was talking with Andy Johnson.
Hey, everybody, I represent the fire department, obviously, I was talking with Andy Johnson before the meeting, we went over the code a little bit, exchanged business cards, I have done, I have had interaction with Maine Drilling and Blasting before, taking down Long Island Bridge, they're a good company, they have a lot of experience, and it's my job to be working on behalf of the citizens, to make sure that these gentlemen enforce the code. I know, I was talking to Murray Harper before the meeting, and I know that there were some complaints back in, was it 2005, there were some blasting that went on up in this neighborhood, different company, different oversight, those are going to be things of the past, we're all on the same page here, so they're moving forward to, hopefully, a seamless thing. But to your point about the high-rise there, I will act as a liaison between these gentlemen, the people in the high-rise, and make sure that everything is taken care of, we want to make sure that everybody knows about this, so that we're not getting 911 calls if something is heard, or felt, but so anyways, we seem to have our ducks in a row in the fight on the side of these gentlemen anyways.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else on board?
Thank you.
Anything else? No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Chairman, thank you. Just a very briefly recap, when this project first came before you, it was filed, it was a forty-unit building, and the building was approximately this long, about thirty-five or forty feet longer than the building is right now, and on that original design, the driveway came up the side of the building, which forced this entire ledge area on the side to have to be blasted to accommodate that original design. We paid attention to what the neighbors had to say at the neighborhood meeting, we listened, we knew that there were serious concerns about blasting, and it had to work, and it would have to be done on this site. So our response to that was we reduced the size of the building from forty units to thirty-two, significantly reduced the footprint and the overall size of the building, but more importantly, by redesigning it to have the two entrances with the entrance on Granite Street, we basically cut the amount of site work and ledge by a third. In the original design with the forty units, it would have required about 29,000 cubic yards of rock to be removed from the site, and with this revised design, it's down to 11,000 cubic yards of rock. So it's not quite a third, but ballpark of a third of the previous proposal. And also, I'd just like to remind the board, I'm sure that you all remember, that this piece of property, the zoning for this property is business C. This is basically the last piece of property in the Quincy Center's own district. On the other side of Parker Street, it changes to Residence B. Behind us, on Parker Street, it changes to Residence B. But this is the last possible business, business C. So this property was designed to be a business C, multifamily parcel. Business C allows an FAR of 3.5, which would mean, the building could be three-and-a-half times the size of the lot, and it also allows you to have one dwelling unit, 3,500 square feet of land. Our project has an FAR of 1.49, which is less than half of what the maximum is allowed in business C, and we have 1,028 square feet of land per unit, with the new design with thirty-two units. So the gross size of the building is less than half of the max that's allowed, the number of units on the site is less than half of the maximum number of units that are allowed, and I think that with this redesign, with the reduction in size of the building, the reduction in site work, I think that we've really done everything we possibly can do, to try to make this project as big as it can be, and still have a viable project to build, to move forward. If you have any questions of any one of the development team, I'd be happy to take them.
When this case was heard in, I think I remember, we afforded the public the opportunity to speak, we also, we closed the public hearing, but afforded anybody that wanted to submit written comments, and I'd like to read into the record, there were a couple. This one is from Judge Lee, and it's addressed to the Chair, our Planning Director, and Ms. Larry Seacamore. My name is Mu, AKA George, the friends and neighbors Lee, and I've lived at 39 Parker Street since August of 2004. I've reviewed the project documents on April 7, 2016, and based on my personal experience with similar projects adjacent to my residence, I'm opposing the 151 Granite Street proposal. I will tell you about my personal experience. For approximately five weeks in 2005, blasting was done on my street to make way for what is now five corners of 23, that's 31 Parker Street. Access to and from Parker Street and the quality of life were negatively affected by this event. The contractor contractors, which did the blasting, did not follow proper protocols, such as giving timed advance warnings via horn consistently, and hiring police slash fire details as outlined in their proposal. I had to contact the Quincy Police and Fire Department myself on numerous occasions concerning the lack of emergency personnel on site during blasting. Cutting corners in this way to save money compromises the safety of local residents, and is not acceptable to me. I can say nothing good about this experience. In the project documents I reviewed, I have concerns that only 48 parking spaces are allocated. Parking on Parker Street for its residents is barely enough as it is, and cannot accommodate more cars, since Granite Street does not allow parking. In fact, during the snow months, the neighbors joke about using space savers. I understand that not all the residents in this proposed building will own a car, but I'm sure some of the residents will have multiple cars. The other issue I have with the proposal is that there is an exit on Parker Street from the garage. Parker Street is narrow and full of blind spots. In fact, I've witnessed an accident with someone exiting the apartment building across from me, get a car going on Parker Street. Lastly, the location of this kind of project will be an enormous burden on traffic flow. That section of Granite Street is where traffic coming up and down Granite Street, and from the Ford Street, from the Ford Hill area, meets and is very congested during peak times. I'm certain that this project will be disrupting traffic flow, and thank you for your attention and your staff. The other correspondence I have, that was submitted, addressed to the Planning Director, the Mayor, members of the board, my name is William Magnozer, and I am the business owner of Magnozer's Fruit Basket, my, I'm also the property owner of the building at 148 Granite Street in Quincy, where Magnozer's Fruit Basket, Five Stop Pizza, and China Chopsticks are located. I was made aware of this project a few weeks ago, and I'm writing to voice my support for it. I've been at this location for twenty-plus years, and was happy to hear that something was finally being done on this lot. I believe that this proposed project, along with many others currently being developed in the area, is what will take, will take to revitalize Quincy Center and bring new life to the area. It's a great way to attract new people to our beautiful and historic city. It is nice to see something being proposed in that area, for that such a long-time seat we almost have been abandoned and not looked at. With the proximity of Quincy Center, I agree that something should be done in this lot, what's better than currently does. Also, from what I have seen over the years, there seems to be an issue with homeless people living and doing illegal activities in the wooded area where this project is being proposed. This has been something that's certainly not good for the city or the residents living nearby, signed by William Magnozer. And I have one additional email, it's addressed to the Planning Director and the Council of King. My name is Jenny Lee, family member and owner of 39 Parker Street. I'm writing to inform you that I'm highly against the 151 Granite Street proposal. The street that I fell in love with, who raised my family, did not have forty-unit development at the end of my street where I purchased this property. We walk up and down the street with our dog and daughter, and construction for years to come could be a huge interruption to our lives and health. Everywhere we look in Quincy, there was huge residential high-rise projects going up. When is this going to stop? Our schools will become too proud to rent, will not be investing in our town, excuse me, will not be investing in our town, because it's stopping, it's a stopping place to rent, not to buy anymore. This is not what I envisioned when I purchased our home in 2004. I want the cozy family homes that owners will invest in our town for years to come. Renters add no value to our town. Overcrowded parking is also a major concern on our street, where renters throw potties and trash the street with garbage and no accountability. You're not seeing that for yourself. It's very concerning that this project is being considered on such a small piece of property and location. I hope my voice is heard and acknowledged with a big no vote in this project, and in special regards, Jenny Lee. That's the only additional correspondence I have, Paul Beer email. I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, Council King, you want to say something?
I'll speak after.
Okay, all right. Ms. Harper?
I want to just let you know some of the other events that occurred since the last meeting. We've met with city departments and the applicants, and they revised the plans to address most of the issues that we brought up. In particular, they did submit the geotechnical report, it's been reviewed by our purity consultant. They also submitted their traffic analysis, which includes site distances, the city's traffic engineer reviewed the plan, and they submitted their recommendations for vehicular pedestrian access. One recommendation is for a pedestrian crosswalk in front of the site at Granite Street. The applicant's traffic consultant suggested this location could become problematic if senior residents who live at 111 Granite are encouraged to cross here rather than this way. That was one issue I felt the board might want to discuss with the applicants tonight, to come to some conclusion on that. The issue of the construction management, I wanted to let you know that there will be a condition if we move forward with this, that they supply a construction management, and that addresses the issue of construction vehicles, where they can park, when, what hours of the day they're able to go in and out. The other item that we discussed was the applicant agreed to provide plowing on Parker Avenue from their driveway, Parker Street, from the driveway down to the intersection of Granite Street during snow events. They agreed to make that part of their condominium association documents. The, we also received a memo yesterday from Tom Fabrizio, who's with the Affordable Housing Trust, that the applicants have met with them and have come to an agreement with the Affordable Housing Trust for cash and lieu of payments. So those are just some things that had happened since the last meeting. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I would like to submit one other.
Okay. An additional, these are correspondence that was directed to the Mayor, the Planning Director, and members of the board. My name is Adrian, sorry, I mispronounced it. I'm a resident of 52 Parker Street in Quincy. My property was at 15 Parker Street, 151 Granite Street, which is the site of a proposed project. I've been following this project's proposed project, and I think there would be great improvements to what's currently located on that site. From what I can see, I think it would bring a great curb appeal to our, to our area. Also, in this area, we have been having a ongoing issue with homeless people. And what I'm seeing, and from what I've heard, there are many homeless people living in the woods around the area, front, back of the site. There've been quite a few no trespassing signs posted, which keep getting taken down all the time. Also, the police have to frequently come here, excuse me, and address calls about the homeless people living there. These people are constantly loud, drunk, and impotent. Myself and others don't feel safe walking down the street. This has been going on for a few years now with no significant improvement. This is a big reason why I think this budget would be a big improvement to what this company has to sell. I think it would be offer a solution to this problem, and should also offer a curb appeal for this area. Please consider our concerns, and thank you for your help. Signed by you.
Before we move to public comment, maybe, with Parker Traffic Issue, it sounds like we should have a discussion before opening up. So, traffic concerns, from the applicant this crosswalk, any thoughts on that?
Our traffic engineer, Jack Gill, on this set, he called me around no time today, and he said he wouldn't give a debate, but he did speak to me about this issue. His concern is that the city's traffic engineer requested that we put a crosswalk across Granite Street approximately in front of our building, which we're not opposed to doing. His concern is that the folks who live further down Granite Street, that the signal and the crosswalk and the light at the intersection is a much better and safer place for them to cross the street. He was concerned that by having a new crosswalk up here, with signage and flashing lights and things like that, that that might encourage people to walk past a safer crossing point, to come up to this one, to cross the street here. That was his main concern. One of the things that the city's traffic engineer asked for, she asked for crosswalk in this location, which we are willing to do, and signage on Granite Street at the appropriate locations, same crosswalk. She also asked for electric flashing crosswalk signs, not just a standard street sign. And that's what really brought up our traffic engineer's main point of concern, was that one, he thinks that they're unnecessary, that we don't have flashing crosswalk signals. To his knowledge, anyone else in the city of Quincy, this would be the first one, but his concern is that if there were those types of flashing signals, that it would entice people to walk past a better- entice people to walk past a better, safer crosswalk to the one with the fancy flashing lights and try to cross here instead of using the intersection further down the street. So that was his main concern.
Thank you for that summary. I think personally, my concern is that you have all these people, and there's a Starbucks across the street, there's a supermarket, and most people not to get out of the crosswalk here to cross right in front of the building. So I'd be inclined to get a crosswalk there. And now, whether it's a traditional crosswalk or something with flashing lights, now, at the same time, cars are humming down Granite Street, and just because we don't have any flashing crosswalks in Quincy, doesn't mean that we shouldn't have some flashing crosswalks in Quincy. So I'd be an advocate of flashing crosswalks to every set. Any other?
Do you know where the nearest crosswalk going south is on Granite Street? Do you mean in a direction toward High Point?
Yeah.
I don't know, there must be one near Florida.
Back at Lane. Up at Back at Lane. Back at Lane.
Which is a part of this.
Consensual to hike.
Yeah, we think it's perfectly reasonable to have a crosswalk here because we expect the people who live in our building, they will go directly across the street, even if there wasn't a crosswalk there. If they wanted to go to the supermarket, they'll probably just run right across the street. So we think having a crosswalk makes sense. The other issue that Mr. Gillon raised with the flashing lights is that once they're installed, they become the city's property and becomes a city's expense and a city's problem to maintain them. And several slides that are kept here. And that was the point Mr. Gillon made, that it becomes an expense on the city to maintain them in the future. That was one of the reasons why he proposed just using traditional crosswalk signage.
Does the city have any thought on what they'd prefer to have there?
The traffic engineer was not available today to give me her final recommendation on this, but her original recommendation was that to provide ADA compliant pedestrian crossing across Granite Street to be reviewed and approved by the city's traffic engineer. If you choose to disclose on this tonight, we can have a condition that they work with the city's traffic to get that crosswalk there to make it the best that we can make in the city that they can operate.
Any other questions? Anything else to recommend?
Based on the city of Quincy's interdepartmental review and the outside peer review, the department recommends for including the site plan review in accordance with Quincy's zoning ordinance of seventeen section nine point five point one.
Excuse me, I discussed one second. Council, do you want to speak before the recommendation was announced?
No, I'm sorry, I can't even hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry. Do you want to speak before the recommendation from the department or after?
Is there any opportunity for the residents to speak tonight?
We had closed the public hearing before, just to allow any emails or written correspondence.
Yeah, and I'll just say a few words. I know that this has been a tough project for the neighborhood around this area, so I just want to make sure, you know, we do know that this is a vibrant project and there's not much that can be done to squash the project in its entirety, but we at least want to make sure that this project goes forward with the least amount of disruption. You know, I know we talked tonight a little bit about the rock removal plan. I just had a couple more questions in that regard. I know it's going to take two months to go through this process, and there's only going to be one blast per day. What time of day typically is this? Is this something that's weather dependent or...
The only thing that'll keep us from blasts and lightning is cold.
So there can be some regularity to this to minimize the disruption and people know when this is taking place over a two-month period?
Yeah, well, the blasting duration will be one month. It's the removal of the material.
Of the rock.
Yeah, so we like to shoot at scheduled times, one that helps us keep a good schedule. And if we're doing the two blasts a day, you're probably looking at something like nine to two. The one would probably be eleven, we like to get the shot up and prepare for the next day. Those are times we typically like to hold too.
And I hope to be kept in the loop by the deputy chief with proper notification, you know, the folks are there in respect of concerns, so we communicate properly, especially with the neighborhood. With the traffic analysis, I do support the analysis put forth by our traffic engineer. I think that, you know, as we look to increase the safety of pedestrians across the city, that's important that we take things like crosswalks, especially lighting signage that's appropriate for people to cross in that area. I think that most people that probably live out of that one-twenty-five development might be used to, I highly doubt that they're going to walk down the street, not to cross into the supermarket plot where Basket is there. I'm pretty sure they'll probably stick to what they're used to, which is important. I think those were my main concerns with the blasting, just, you know, we need to make sure that we're minimizing the risks that are around safety and disruption to the neighborhood. It's been a touchy subject, and I hope that we all can stay in communication so that we can be able to communicate, let's keep it in place on a regular basis with the folks in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
These are the recommendations for conditions for the approval of this project. Condition one, the applicant shall submit a final set of plans to the city engineer with response to the final comments listed in the StanTech peer review letter of April seventh, two thousand and sixteen. StanTech is our consultant peer review, and they have just a few little tweaks, minor details to the site plan to coordinate with the architectural plan. Number two, the project is subject to inclusionary zoning ordinance, and the applicant shall adhere to the Affordable Housing Trust recommendation related to onsite units or cash and low up units. Any recommendation by the Affordable Housing Trust shall be incorporated into the planning board's special permit decision. Number three, the applicant shall seek approval from the City of Quincy zoning board of appeals or zoning enforcement officer as appropriate for any necessary relief or findings related to City of Quincy zoning ordinance, the same or not under the authority of the planning board. The applicant and successive owners of the property shall be responsible for snow plowing, sanding, and snow removal as required for the project's site, including driveways and walkways. In addition to the plowing and sanding performed by the City of Quincy, the applicant and successive owners shall plow and sand the portion of Parker Street between the project driveway and Granite Street after snow events. This condition shall not obligate the applicant or its successors entitled to maintain or repair Parker Street, nor shall it be interpreted to transfer liability to the applicant or its successors entitled for injury or damages sustained by usage of the public way. Prior to any occupancy permits being issued, the applicant shall admit to the planning board, submit, I'm sorry, shall submit to the planning board a copy of the reported condominium association agreement, which shall contain reference to the approved stormwater operation and maintenance plan and the approved snow removal agreement referenced in special condition number four. Number six, the applicant shall provide a construction management plan to include detailed traffic management plans, including temporary traffic control, crosswalk detours, construction truck routes, staging areas, and other protections, at least one month prior to the start of construction, to the city's traffic engineer for review and approval. No construction vehicles related to this project shall be allowed to obstruct vehicle access to the neighborhood of Parker Street and Carlson Street, or to obstruct access to any driveways of residents on these roadways. Hours for the delivery of materials during construction shall be determined by the city's traffic engineer upon submission of the construction management plan. Number eight, the applicant, this is a rather technical condition, it goes into some of the issues with the rock removal. The applicant shall provide an overall rock removal plan that will include, but not be limited to, A, the findings of the recent rock probes and cores which have been completed by the applicant's engineers, B, designs for permanent and/or temporary excavation in rock, designs for drainage at the base of the rock slope and along portions of the face of the rock slope to divert water to the drainage hole, and if appropriate, depending on the final profile of the rock slope, to be determined from recent field testing, a drainage detail along the top of the rock slope to divert surface water from flowing along the rock face to minimize potential for ice balls during winter months, C, the estimated quantity of rock removal, and number of truck trips, number of days of blasting, dust control, and E, adherence to the fire department's requirements for blasting, with said plan to be submitted to the city building department at least one month prior to the start of construction to be reviewed by the city building inspector and the city traffic engineer. Number nine, the applicant shall be required to adhere to the City of Quincy blast requirements with the fire department. This is a condition that I also wanted to discuss with you. The state requires the blasted company to do a survey of two hundred and fifty feet around the perimeter. We wanted to ask them to go a little further to three hundred and fifty feet. We've been told that a resident can repay that survey themselves, and we would like to request from the applicant that they would pay for those surveys, the pre-blast surveys up to three hundred and fifty feet around the perimeter rather than two hundred and fifty. It adds approximately eight or nine more residents on Parker Street. So in order to ensure that the abutters and residents of the adjacent units are protected, the applicant shall form a pre-blasted blast survey on all buildings and snow walls within a three hundred and fifty-foot radius of the wall. Number ten, the applicant shall provide an ADA compliant pedestrian crossing across Granite Street to be reviewed and approved by the city's traffic engineer prior to construction. Number eleven, the applicant shall work with the city's traffic engineer to determine if the current crosswalk and curb ramps across Parker Street are ADA compliant. If not, the applicant shall redesign and construct the curb ramps at this intersection to bring them into compliance. Number twelve, the applicant shall replace the current stop sign imposed on Parker Street at the intersection of Granite Street and add a stop ahead sign one hundred and fifty feet from the replaced stop sign. Any signs installed on public ways will need the approval of the Quincy City Council. Number thirteen, the applicant shall adhere to conditions set forth in the March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, common letter submitted by the City of Quincy Department of Health as follows. Number one, road control. The developer must submit documentation that construction activities proposed for the development of this facility will not cause road and controls, road problems for abutters. We require a road control plan be developed and submitted to the health department for review and approval prior to any site activities. Environmental controls, we request that the dust and noise control plans be developed and incorporated within all construction specifications and permits issued for this project. Demolition newly amended regulations require a pre-devil survey for any potential asbestos containing materials be conducted by a DLI certified inspector. If ACM is present, it must be removed by a licensed contractor and a maintenance inspection must be performed by DLI certified project monitor. A pre-devilation inspection of this structure will be required to be performed by the health department. And then the state sanitary code, the residential units proposed to be developed will be required to meet all provisions of Article Two of the state sanitary code, minimum standards of fitness for human habitation. Number fourteen, the applicant shall install survey monuments to delineate the colored brights of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the City of Quincy building and engineering departments a digital file of as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks to find in the site. The applicant shall submit a stormwater operation and maintenance plan, which shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Register of Deeds and will include stormwater management system planner, party responsible for operation and maintenance, an estimated operation and maintenance budget, and a maintenance log. The owner shall be required to submit a completed stormwater O and M plan inspection. Actually, this condition I had in here, but I realized afterwards we do not need that one, refers to them being any way submitting information. One week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. Number nineteen, at any point during construction, the applicant shall allow the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to enter the site for a purpose of making observations as to compliance of site construction with the improved site plans and conditions of approval. Number twenty, the City of Quincy may, at its discretion, use consultants to supplement city staff force, but not limited to the purpose of site construction observation. The consultant review escrow account shall be fully funded thirty days prior to any land disturbance activities. And finally, number twenty-one, the hours for construction activities will be as follows: seven AM to six PM Monday from Friday, eight AM to four PM on Saturday. All construction and deliveries shall be prohibited on Sunday unless approved by the chief of police.
And then the additional construction approval of the pedestrian crosswalks.
Yes, I believe that was in here. I have written that down. Number ten was the applicant shall provide ADA compliant pedestrian crossing. That covers it?
Yep.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
Just with three hundred and fifty, the applicant has agreed that the three hundred and fifty.
Yes, we have no, we have no to that.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve based on the conditions as written in the record. Questions being made as a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a lousy dog and bony show. We didn't get to spring, but we're invited. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gillon, you afforded that opportunity at the previous public hearing.
I couldn't make it. I'm a working guy, I got other things to do.
I don't want you to, you submitted written comments.
No, I didn't.
I've got two copies of the letters that you gave me. I'm pressing. I'm keeping them at the library.
I never went to the library. I've been to the library in years.
The next item is a continuing public hearing. Before we get to this next item, I'm just going to announce to the public, excuse me, I'd just like to announce to the public that we've had an item for a public hearing of five hundred Commander Shay Boulevard, the fed-up site in review. We have a letter from the applicant's representative asking that they postpone for the next meeting, which would be June eighth. For a second? All those in favor? Aye. I don't know if everybody heard that, but continuing the public hearing of five hundred Commander Shay Boulevard. Ladies and gentlemen, if you can move out of the meeting room, if you're not here for the next meeting, please. The five hundred Commander Shay Boulevard hearing is going to continue to June eighth at the request of the applicant's attorney. Okay. Thirty-two Gilson Road, eighteen Johnson Avenue, site in, special permit, continued from the January twenty-seventh public hearing.
Good evening, chairman and board members, my name is Karen Carroll, I'm an attorney in Quincy, and I represent the applicant's attorneys. I've just come on board with the project, however, tonight we brought in the development team of Tim Johnson, our applicant, and we brought in our attorney here tonight to speak with you on the project. Just to recap, the project consists of two structures, and one is very blighted that the applicant requests, if their request is approved, they will take down the two structures. Of course, when they do that, they'll put in adequate road and control maintenance program in place. The project consists of twenty-four units, and from what I have learned from researching the original application, there was concerns about parking issues. The applicant has gone back, redesigned the project, so that we have now thirty-eight parking spaces internally, with four parking spaces as a transient space out in the open area. many of the residents of the pride, the building, will probably take the T all due to the impact. In fact, the applicant has also designed a parking plan for the building that there will be flows out of the two egresses in the garage. Again, we'll make the presentation and we'll recap there. We'll start off with our architect.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Johnson, the project architect. This project came before the board previously in September of two thousand and fifteen. At that point, it was a four-story, twenty-four-unit building with twenty-four parking spaces, twenty-one garage, three outside. So it gave us a parking ratio of one dwelling unit, one parking space. Since then, we listened to the community, the board members, and we've come back with a new scheme, which is a, again, twenty-four-unit building, however, it's a five-story building with thirty-eight garage parking spaces and not four, but three exterior for a total of forty-one parking spaces, which gives us a parking ratio of one point seven, much over the required one point five. So, yeah, I don't know if anyone knows where this site is. This is an unusual site, it's a familiar site, and it's access, I can show from our civil engineer's drawing, it'll be easier. It's access from two corners, one from Gilson, which is off of Greenleaf, which goes to Hancock, the other is off of Johnson, which goes directly to him. There's also an eleven-foot grade change between Gilson and Johnson, which allows us to actually bury one of the garages because now instead of a one-story garage, we have a two-story garage. We have a site plan here on Gilson Road. We have twenty-one parking spaces off Gilson with an area for track. And then when we go up Johnson, Johnson is here, we have seventeen parking spaces also here at the track. These are going to be two-bedroom, two-bath units, approximately eleven hundred square feet. They'll be elevator servicing, servicing all floors, so all units are handicapped. We will have, as I mentioned, trash and recycling for the Gilson side, and we also have trash and recycling for the Johnson side. Per capita trash generation in the U.S. is about four point four pounds, that's loose, not compacted per person. So we estimate about three point six cubic yards of trash loose per week, which is about two cubic yard dumpsters, which will be rolled, which will be on wheels. Also, we'll have one trash recycling bin per unit, and that will be picked up bi-monthly. Step back, in the City of Quincy, if you're more than eight units, you have to privately contract for trash removal. This will be privately contracted. So we'll have, in the lower driveways, we'll have twelve recycling bins and we'll have one two-cubic yard trash container on wheels. On the Johnson side, we will also have twelve recycling bins and one two-cubic yard dumpster on wheels. We do have a landscape plan, which I can go over if anyone's interested. I want to make this brief. Of course, this building will adhere to the Stretch Energy Code, that's twenty percent more energy efficient than current code. We also adhere into the Dark Sky Initiative, which means all lighting will be shielded and downlighting. There'll be no lighting, no light pollution to a buddy properties. And lastly, the, this is a north, south, east-west access, so the roof is conducive to future solar panels. And our exterior materials will be fiber cement siding, fiberglass windows and door frames, of course, energy star windows. We have also brick veneer on the Gilson side, and we have standing metal ceiling roofing at the entry, at the upper entry element on both sides. This is Gilson. This is Johnson, elevation, our landscape plan. I can quickly go over briefly the traffic study by Jack Gillem Associates through the Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report, that there will be fifteen trips during the weekday evening period hours with ten inbound trips and five outbound trips. During a normal weekday, there will be approximately a hundred and sixty trips, with approximately eighty inbound and eighty outbound. The projected traffic impact on the neighborhood streets due to this project will be imminence, which means, especially after discounting the trips previously generated by the two multifamily homes that exist at the site. And with that, I will give it over to the civil engineer, Mike Joyce.
Hello, Michael Joyce, Joyce Consulting Group. Since the last rendition of this plan, it hasn't changed all that much. A lot of it has been interior and then parking access, but from a stormwater design standpoint, the same standard design is the rooftop runoff will be collected via roof leaders directed to stormwater infiltration chambers. The runoff in the parking lot will be directed to a storm scepter, which will provide your TSS removal and oil separation. They both go into the infiltration system, which will recharge groundwater. The stormwater will alter to an alter control structure, which ties into the existing City of Quincy drainage within Gilson Road. In order to accommodate the new driveway coming off of Johnson Avenue, we're proposing is a purvis pavement to access the garage, the garage area, and below that purvis pavement is essentially a twenty-four inch deep storage area consisting of a filter, stone, a piece dome for about three inches, then crush dome for the remainder. And that provides your stormwater treatment and recharge, and that has enough storage capacity such that it won't overflow in a hundred-year storm and all be stored within that reservoir. Outside of that, the things have changed since the last time. We've added some more traffic controls. Deb Finnegan from the Traffic Department, it asked us to call out new tactile or ADA compliant pedestrian ramps at Greenleaf with the new stop sign and new stop line. Those aren't shown on this plan, but they're shown on the updated plan. She's also asked to add a stop sign Linden Court with a stop line, which we provided. Then that's about the extent of it. A couple additional things added to the stormwater management plan, but that's it.
Any questions from the board members? Mr. Joyce?
Just a couple clarification questions. So in terms of accessing the parking lots, there's, there's the two parking lots and access one via Johnson and one via.
Exactly, yeah. So Johnson Ave is roughly ten, eleven feet higher than Gilson Road, so the access for the, call it the basement level garage is through this parking lot here, and it's a down and back. So that's, that's the access to the Gilson Road garage will be here. Johnson Ave, you come in and you access from Johnson Ave to the first level garage above, and that has, we have seventeen spaces above and twenty-one below. So the reason for the lots above is just coming in at the angle rather than dead center where you are on the first floor.
So I assume that the residents will have assigned lots, and if they go to Johnson and don't find a space there, they go back?
Yeah.
They'll be assigned to everybody.
It's going to be, the applicant's going to retain it, manage it, and they're going to assign it in such a way that the flows will be out by the floors if they want to be out here at the same time.
My second question is, there's a business, I'm forgetting what it is, on the northeast corner of Hancock and Johnson?
Sullivan Tire.
Sullivan Tire, and there's a parking lot, I think, behind that, north of that.
Yeah, it's the back of the COGS and the Woodworks.
Okay, yes.
Kind of a stairway.
Not Sullivan Tire.
The other one, yeah.
In the large.
So there's the proposed building, there's a residential building here, and the parking lot.
That's the municipal building.
Basic services.
Okay.
Head sector.
Okay, thank you.
And school.
And the school also.
And then the school is beyond that, right. My question really simply, it looks like you could go through that parking lot to access this building, is that?
We will, sir. We already do that.
We do it already. We live right, I'm right. Right there.
May I go be afforded an opportunity to question?
Yeah, there's, as far as I know, as the woman stated, there is, there's nothing to prevent you from coming basically from Hancock to Gilson Road, going to this parking lot.
So on the parking, how many, you guys have enough parking spaces by right, is that correct? If you're not asking for a parking waiver for spaces, you're asking for a parking waiver tonight for the width of your parking space, is that, is that accurate?
That's accurate. Some of the parking spaces are empty versus.
So not all of them, some of them?
Some of the.
How many are?
Some are. It's for coffee spacing. And, yeah, one point five is the requirement here, or one point seven. So for example, one, two, three, four, four. Four out of the thirty-eight.
And then there are all, in, in the total are three spaces at the end of Gilson that will also be assigned, but they'll just be outside?
Those will be outside. And, no, they won't be outside.
Honestly, this is.
They're temporary. So in the wintertime, that becomes a major snow area, they'll break down Gilson.
So they're not part of the count then?
Uh, no. No, there are thirty-eight total spaces, which is one point six, we add the three to one point seven.
Could you just repeat the number of projected trips to and from again?
One six.
One six, one six, eighty and thirty. And that's considered imminence?
According to, according to Jack Gillem Associates, yes. I'm not the traffic engineer, he's ill tonight, but I think you have a copy of the report.
Yeah.
A hundred and sixty trips, approximately eighty inbound and eighty outbound. And through his graphs and calculations, he projects a traffic impact on the neighborhood streets due to this project to be minimal.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
There were just a couple of issues that I could ask.
Go ahead.
Tim, you mentioned the trash receptacles on the Johnson level parking. Where will the trash be kept on there? I didn't see it on the plan that I have.
Right now, it's labeled storage, but we just allocated a space up there.
Okay, so you'll have it stored here.
Right, so this area here, so it'll only be thirteen, twelve rolling bins for recycling and then one.
Will it be taken down the elevator to get to the, will it be taken down the elevator?
Well, this will be privately contracted, so they could come down Johnson to pick up on this end in Gilson.
Okay. The other item that we noticed was the width of the garage doors are twelve feet. Deb Finnegan had mentioned that we might, you might need to enlarge those a little bit. Can you get them to fourteen feet?
We can get them to fourteen feet, of course, yes.
It just would make the maneuverability a little bit easier, she felt, so. I think that was the only two things currently that I have questions about. The other item, which voices the.
One of the questions that came up from the board, can we have the deputy chief here? I'd like to ask him, the maneuver, deputy chief Jackson? The maneuverability of a ladder to.
I was actually just having a discussion with the Murphy brothers back here, and I think they're from the fire department side of things. We're going to be able to make things work. We had two primary issues. One was access to the site with a lot of trucks, and one was water supply. And in talking to them, I think that we're going to be able to find ways around Baltimore. So, yeah, from the fire department side of things, we're all set.
Can you explain that to me though?
Um, yeah, I believe in talking to these guys, if I understand correctly, Gilson Road is coming down this way, Linden Court comes out this way, so we can be able to get a lot of truck to the front of the building and then to leave to back down Linden Court and come out. As far as water supply, they have to have a hydrant within one hundred feet of the fire department connection. I am talking to them right now, they've agreed to put a fire department connection on the front of the building here, so we have a hydrant in the front within twenty-five feet of the fire department connection. They've agreed to put one on the back as well, so we could tie in if we wanted a hydrant off of Hancock Street, we could use that as well. So we have both sides of the building covered and access to the site seems like it's doable.
Sure.
As you probably know, Quincy is becoming quite friendly. I don't recall whether I saw storage space for bicycles or I made a home.
Yes, bike storage space would be along the exterior walls at the end of the car parking. So we have twenty-foot deep parking spaces, we have a twenty-four-foot wide travel lane, and then we have approximately four and a half feet for bike storage along this wall and this wall on both floors.
Okay, before I open up to the public, our council of Forest is here.
So I prefer to allow the bomb, I guess, to speak first, please.
Okay, so we'll now open it up to the public for comment. Just ask you to identify who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Andrew Sutton. I'm an attorney at Reemer Ronstein, Three Center Plaza, Boston, Massachusetts. I represent Ifred De Senzo LLC, who's the owner of the Sullivan Tire, which is a butter to the project, and I remember last time my client voiced some concerns about parking in the area. I'm here before you tonight only to some very unique circumstances, which I don't think you'll experience again. I, you have a land developer of butter who has actually hired a land use attorney, whose job it is to typically promote projects like this, to oppose this project. And the second circumstance why I'm here tonight is frankly because I'm actually really confused. And I'm confused because I don't really understand why we're even still talking about this project. And I've brought some boards and I kind of like to walk you through my confusion, since my client actually hired me to do a peer review of this. Now, you have a beautiful peer review in the planning file from Gail. They did an awesome job, and they raised a lot of the issues that I'm going to bring up tonight. So that Gail peer review came up in December, and for the life of me, I don't really understand how we can approve a site plan for a project with such problematic private issues, with respective private easement rights in the form of rights in Johnson Avenue belonging to the owner of Lot C, or I'm sorry, yeah, Lot C, from the subdivision of the original parcel number two in nineteen fifty-six, which created the lots that the developers purchased, and also with respective private rights in Johnson Avenue that are owned by the BCC, which actually gets you from Hancock Avenue to Johnson Avenue. And then furthermore, the question of where exactly Johnson Avenue goes, because it's not really correctly identified here, and that's an issue that Gail brought up, and those are private rights that really have nothing to do with the public process here. So even if they were to get all of the relief, they requested the zoning relief, site plan review, special permits, excavation permits, demolition permits, everything, that's still an issue that's going to impact the financeability of the project and might never make it happen. Because you might have a person here who has rights in the footprint of Johnson Avenue that were created in nineteen fifty-six that they're trying to build on, which Gail identi- to the owner of Lot C, or, I'm sorry, Lot, yeah, Lot C, um, from the subdivision of the original parcel number two in 1956, which created the lots that the developers purchased, and also with respect to private rights in Johnson Avenue that are owned by the BCC, which actually gets you from Hancock Avenue to Johnson Avenue. Um, and then furthermore, the question of, of where exactly Johnson Avenue goes, because it's not really correctly identified here, and that's an issue that Gail brought up, and those are private rights that really have nothing to do with the public process here, so even if they were to get all of the relief, they requested the zoning relief, site plan review, special permits, excavation permits, demolition permits, everything, that's still an issue, that's going to impact the financeability of the project, and might never make it happen, because you might have a person here who has rights in the footprint of Johnson Avenue that were created in 1956, that they're trying to build on, which Gail identified. Now, the, one of the main issues that I'm concerned about, and I don't understand, I'm going to pull up my board here to help me with this, is the issue with the zoning here, and, you know, we've got an application that discusses the zoning here, as, as multifamily use being permitted in the Business C district in Quincy. So, this property's a little bit weird, and I guess it won't fit, but, property's a little bit weird, it's probably a little bit weird when we're talking about zoning, just to, just to acclimate you, this is my client's site here, at Linden White, and this is the property here, this, I'm going to refer to this as Lot A, because that's what it was called in the subdivision, 32 Gilson Road. Lot B is 18 Johnson Avenue, and Lot C is 14 Johnson Avenue, near the BCC here, Gilson Road, Linden Court. Um, now, the residential A zoning district in Quincy actually comprises, I'm going to say, I, I measured it out to about 6,000 square feet of the 8,000 square feet that Lot A occupies. So, the primary use of Lot A is residential A, not single family, that's your highest, most protected use in Quincy. And then you have Business C over here, in Business C, you have multifamily dwellings which are permitted as a conditional use, not as an, not, not as a bright use, because if you look at the dimensional table in your zoning bylaw, Note 2 basically says, you can build multifamily dwellings in Business C if you have 42,000 square feet, if you have 2,500 square feet per unit, if you have 100 yards, 100 feet of frontage, if you have XYZ open space, you know, there's a set of criteria which are specifically set forth to enable that use, in absence of having a lot which meets that criteria, that use is not permitted. So right now, we're looking at a project for a use that's not permitted in the residential A, and it's not permitted in the residential B, and essentially seeking relief for the criteria that would permit it for residential, for residential, uh, for, in, in the Business C district, is effectively a dimensional variance, which is sort of like an end around to a use variance. Now, that's not a big deal in Quincy, because you're allowed to give use variances, but by saying that you don't need 42,000 square feet, or you don't need 2,500 square feet, what you're really saying is, we're going to allow a use that the zoning bylaw really doesn't provide for, for this type of property in this district. So, that's kind of the first reason I'm confused. Now, I know that in some municipalities where you have a zoning boundary that bifurcates property, there is a provision in the zoning bylaw that might explicitly provide that if your property is partially in one zoning district and partially in another zoning district, you can kind of pick which zoning district you want to be in. But I didn't see that in the Quincy bylaw, and I don't think that's something that is provided for under the zoning act. So in the absence of that, just reading the literal language of the Quincy bylaw, I think it's pretty clear that the Quincy bylaw really enforces their zoning districts the way that they are. Now, if we look at this particular map, you can see that this line here was purposefully meant to cross over, and in a very intelligent move, which I, I don't know who did it, but maybe it's the planning department, or, or maybe it's something that is standard in Quincy, but you don't see it a lot in other cities and towns, um, the zoning districts that were drawn for your city actually track the middle of the street line, so that you have legal access to two different types of use from a street, because there's case law on point, which says that you cannot access a more intense use via a lower intense use. Now, when they created this district here, specifically on this lot, the Business C that runs along the center of Gilson Ave, doesn't connect to the Business C, that comes this way. So this law is specifically cut off from access from Gilson Road to the, you know, from Gilson Road to the Business C district. From Gilson Road on this site, you only can legally access the residential A part of the site for residential A use, because if, because the destination use, it takes on the characteristic of what you're going through to get to that use. So you have a significant legal access problem from here. Now, that's something that you should probably have town council take a look at, and I know that's not part of site plan review, but that would significantly impact the design of this building, availability of parking, if indeed a legal issue based on Massachusetts general laws, not Quincy zoning ordinances, prevents access from Gilson Road to this property, and it just very well may, then there's a question of whether or not a variance there, a use variance for the residential A parcel land, is even sufficient to get you to the multifamily use, because without rezoning that district, it's not clear that that's the intent of the legislature in town to allow that sort of access. So for me, there are significant private and public issues with respect to access to this site, and what that means, which are, which really make the design of this building questionable. So you could go ahead and approve a site plan tonight, and go through your condition, and walk through this, but this isn't something that I made up, this is something that Gail identified, this is something that's been out there for five months after the November hearing, that hasn't been addressed. There's no discussion of why the residential A district doesn't matter, there's just a simple discussion of, well, you know, we require zoning relief. Okay, um, well, one thing I'm not confused about is that zoning relief, uh, is a variance. In Massachusetts, you get a hardship for a variance, and I'm fairly certain that you won't have a hardship here, and I'm fairly certain that you won't meet the standard that requires that a, uh, use not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, or that it not substantially derogate from the intent of the bylaw, because the relief that will be requested is indeed substantially derogating from the intent of the bylaw. You're essentially taking all of the dimensional requirements of the bylaw and the user requirement and saying, throw them out the window, give me a variance, so I can put 24 units on a 14,000-foot lot, when your bylaw says you can put units on a 42,000-square-foot lot, assuming that you have 2,500 square feet per unit, which would give you, how many units? 16, on a 42,000-square-foot lot, because that's 42,000 divided by 2,500. So, in a lot of situations where you talk about variances, it's difficult to quantify the value of variance, okay? So if I have, you know, typically your variance is going to be a situation where you have a sloped lot, and I need to put my house in the front yard setback, because I can't otherwise build a house on my lot, and I lose my value, my investment, so, you know, does that have a negative impact on anybody, what's really the value of that to you? It's hard to say. But in this cir, in this situation, it's a little bit different, because we're actually talking about land acquisition costs in square. So, uh, we know from the record and doing our research on this project, that Lot 18 was acquired, that's the dilapidated lot that everybody wants torn down, where the, you know, kids are doing heroin or whatever, and, you know, probably the basis for this big ask, um, that, you know, is still there, decaying, and probably will be, um, you know, that was picked up for $2,600, um, $250,000 from the man who actually bought it, from the development company that subdivided this property in 1956. So he was probably pretty old. Um, then, about a year later, the developer went ahead and acquired this lot, 32 Gilson Ave, and they paid $620,000 for that lot, and they, almost immediately after they closed on it, and, you know, maybe at the end of, end of the summer and the fall, came in before you guys to, to talk about this project. So it's a pretty speedy project, um, and, you know, it's, it's concerning, because if you break out the numbers, 14,000 square feet, $880,000 breaks out to about $62 per square foot, if they acquired the extra 28,000 square feet that they needed to meet the bylaws, that's $1.7 million of additional land that they would need to comply with the bylaws. So if they get a variance for that, that's like the city of Quincy giving them a check for $1.7 million. So you better really want this project, if that's your, if that's your opinion on variances. But we know that this is a successful business, it's got a tenant, this is a successful business, its law offices, and this guy probably doesn't want to sell his house. So, the question is, what would it even cost to acquire these properties? I can tell you right now, based on my client's cash flows, this is probably a $2.5 million property. That makes this probably a million-dollar property, and that makes this, you know, if they bought it at the standard rate, it's probably a $600, $700,000 property, but now that they've gone ahead and developed it, or proposed this, it's probably more. So what you're really looking at, if you grant the variance for this project, the variances that are, that are desired...
I'm sorry, excuse me, sir, this board does not issue variance.
No, I understand that, but my point is, that to design this project in the layout with the setbacks, and to approve a site plan which is contingent upon zoning relief is a futile exercise, and frankly, I don't know why they're wasting the board's time, because the variances are all going to be appealed by the neighbors, they're going to fall, because there's no hardship, the property's going to be tied up in litigation, so it's not, it doesn't make any sense for your board to approve this design, because you know that it's sitting in the footprint of Johnson Avenue, and you know that it's, and that there's private rights in it which could prevent the development, you know that it's not financeable while those still exist, and you know that the variance is proven issue. So I'm just trying to illustrate to you the distinction between what they are asking for, and what's actually required for a multifamily, um, property in the Business C district based on the actual use requirements in the bylaw. So, these three lots, that's 32,000 square feet, if they acquired these three lots, they would have enough property to do the deal. That's what your zoning bylaw wants, it wants more than 42,000 square feet to do this deal. This would probably be about an additional $5 million of land acquisition cost, okay?
Those issues are up to the developer, okay? We're dealing, and by the way, and I think that's what Ms. Lappin was talking about, zoning issues are determined and approved by the zoning, uh, office of the city of Quincy, Mr. Dooker. Mr. Dooker isn't here tonight, right? In terms of what's, what needs a variance and what doesn't, that's Mr. Dooker's responsibility.
I think it would be futile to approve a plan where you have a property that is clearly in the road layout, in the footprint of Johnson Avenue, okay? We've done the background research, we know that Johnson Avenue, by itself, zoning issues aside, we know that there's private issues here. If you see fit to approve this plan, they are going to be here before you again, talking about another plan, they will not get zoning relief, because the abutters will appeal it, and they will appeal it again, and as it goes through denial after denial after denial, or if it makes it through Quincy, it's going to go to the appeals court, it's going to go to the HJC, and it's going to be denied again. And I think it's a very cavalier attitude for a developer to come before you, even though I know, and I've, having talked to the planning department, I know that you don't have a regulation that requires zoning approvals and legal, you know, rights being resolved before your site plan approval, but it just doesn't make sense, why are we talking about this? That's what's confusing to me, why are we talking about this?
We have an application before this court that they have a responsibility to...
Sure. And I asked, and I asked myself this question as I reviewed this project, why did, why, why would you go for site plan review before your zoning relief? Why would you go for, why would you design a project and spend money on architectural renderings before resolving roadway issues?
It's the applicant's decision.
It is, and the strategy is just so that you can, so that you can get the Gail technical review, it's probably because this isn't really what you want, you don't expect to get this project, you're trying to take a swing for the fences, and you know now who's opposing you, and you know now what's going to happen, and you know that you're going to get sued by the abutters, you know that you're going to get in trouble with, uh, you know, your variances, and you're going to have to sit down and redesign the project, because if you don't sit down and work with the abutters, everything that gets spent for this project here tonight, you might as well just flush it down the toilet and burn it. So rather than hemorrhaging money, going through appeals, tying up the property, design the project in accordance with the bylaws, design something that works for the abutters, and design something that's not going to have negative impact on my client's property, that's not going to have people coming in, and be responsive to the issues that have been raised by the town, including the zoning issues, including the safety issue and the other issues.
Thank you very much, I, I think that your fellow advocacy for your client is much appreciated, we, we love hearing from the public, you came, uh, uh, in stead of your client, and I think that your comments are duly noted, um, but we have a ton of...
Absolutely. In the interest of time, I will, I will conclude my remarks, and I will, uh, encourage the board to consider the futility of approving anything here tonight, and encourage the board to suggest that the developer withdraw, to take the time to review the issues with respect to access from Gilson Road, with respect to their requests for this property, with respect to the impacts that they might have in the neighborhood, and to sit down with the abutters to think this through, so that you can actually have the best project that you can have, without running through appeal after appeal after appeal, because the process associated with this particular project is very, very, very detailed, and there are a lot of hearings that can be...
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah, I, actually, can I use the, uh, the glasses? Give reference to where I am.
Identify someone.
Now, Richard Carr, I live at, um, I live over by the John, we live at 28 30 Gilson Road, which is, um, which is actually right on, it's on Gilson Road, our property is right on the corner of this lot here. So in order for me to access my home, I come down here, my driveway is right here, so obviously I'm going to be directly impacted as well. But, um, when we had the last meeting in November, this was classed as, I think, a five-story building. One, two, three, four, five, and with the review of, review of the new, I see six stories, my concern is, in the neighborhood that's predominantly two-family homes, this is definitely on a massive scale. For a 14,000-square-foot lot, it's almost 15,000 square feet of abandoned, so, I'm across the budget.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Sir?
Uh, my name is David Grofey, and I live on 11 Gilson Road, um, and I read the peer review, the traffic impact, um, I was kind of floored by the idea that, um, they were thinking only 160, um, trips a day was a minimal impact. Just a couple pictures that I took, this is the entranceway to Gilson Road, that's my car, it's a Passat, it's an on-beat car, and it's a normal way to park, to drive your car down the street, you cannot turn onto Gilson Road when there's a car coming off of Gilson, you just cannot. It's too, it's too narrow, you said 14-foot on the driveway to make it wider, was a question you had, I think, earlier?
On the garage.
Go for the garage?
Right.
That entranceway to our street is not 14 feet, it's maybe 10. Um, throughout the day, you have cars parked along the whole street with deliveries for the other apartment buildings, and those are at the entranceway to Gilson, and to say that it's going to be a minimal impact on this street is, uh, is pretty bad. The street itself doesn't have any access for, uh, for people to walk up and down, and, you know, if it gets past all the, the appeals, um, you know, the street's going to need some serious reconstruction. The pipes on the street, last year, when, uh, the Department of Public Works was doing work on the street, they said it was, um, that the pipes were the original pipes from eight, from the late 1800s, and if you're going to be pumping in water that would be coming down, there should be, the pipes should be fixed on the street, um, and these are concerns, these are legitimate concerns about the neighborhood. I would love to see that house gone, do not get me wrong, there are kids out there drinking again this afternoon, kids out there doing whatever else they're doing, I would love to see this property gone, I'd love to see something nice in there. This is a big project. I look directly across the field, I'd be looking right at it, you have a school right there, it's something to consider with an all-girls school being right there, with construction throughout, throughout the summer here, with, um, with people just, you know, being on their balconies during the day, that it's a lot, it's a lot of, uh, a lot more people coming onto the road, and so that's my concern. Um, I'd like the idea of the project, but it needs to be scaled down, this is, this is way too big a project for a dead-end street, you know?
Two dead-end streets.
Two dead-end streets, and, you know, people, people already park in this parking lot, and I don't, I don't know when the, the traffic impact is done, but just that alone, has 30 cars parked in it at least every day, that's 60, and there, when they started parking there, you notice the big difference when the health center opened up about the traffic flow on the street. when the health center opened up about the traffic flow on the street. And so those are my concerns.
Sir, did you want to submit these to the record?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Would you mind labeling where they are located? I'm afraid we'll get them and we won't realize which streets those are. If you don't mind, just on the back.
And even the. Probably more as well.
Yeah, take that one out.
You don't, also going off of Gilson onto Greenleaf, there's no signage about parking. So people park right up on the curbs. And it's dangerous because people fly down Greenleaf, they think it's a thoroughfare. You know, they think it's Bergen Parkway. And they use it as a cut-through from 3A into Hancock. And people are flying, and to take a right turn, I go so slowly, and I'm a crazy driver. And I, I am so cautious at that corner all the time because I know I'm going to get drilled on it one of these days, especially with the way the cars are parked. So those are my concerns, I'll label this for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Anyone else?
Please.
Yeah.
My son, Gavin, I live on 20 years. I just, there's a lot of limpets on the street, and it is a dead end. And they can't do much right now with the, you know, this car. Quite great if there's a lot of cars go down, don't realize it's a dead end. They turn around and start speeding back up now. And there's a lot of cars, you know, there's a lot of traffic going, you know, the school next door and the health place. Want to have this coming down the street, another, maybe people got cars coming in today and coming out. There's at the top of Gilson Road, on both sides, there already are two apartment buildings. And they're parking on the extra places that there, that are down the street. There's nowhere for them to be to, you know, it's just, it's a tiny little road. And as Derek said, if someone's parked, you can't, you, there's only one, if you have, if you're going down, nobody else can come up right now. You know, it's very, very narrow.
Like, can I make one more point in that? I mean, we're only like a two-minute walk to the tea station. Most people park in the street. They're not on there, they park anywhere in the street, walk to the tea and get like a four or five chocolate even. I called Margaret to have cars towed and moved. I called the city to have cars moved through. And it's, that's.
Was there? I think that there was a neighborhood meeting, was there a neighborhood meeting?
Yes, I'll go into that.
And what was, what did the neighbors want to see?
Well, we, we wanted to see the two sites developed. You had a two-family home and a three-family home. So you're aligned five units, you know, that was, obviously, one you could get. One unit was accessible by Gilson Road, the other unit was accessible from Johnson Ave. So they were separate, even though their neighbors are separated by streets. And we want to see something that's, you know, more fitted.
Scaled down.
It's got to be scaled down a lot. It's a 48,000 square foot lot. In Bray Tree, it doesn't qualify for a single-family home. So, not using that as a reference, but you have to have 15,000 square feet in Bray Tree to have a single-family home. So I just feel that it's on a massive scale.
Anybody else want to speak, sir?
Michael Griffin. I live at Nine Linden Court. I'll reference as well. Again, I just want to voice my. Surprise at the minimal traffic impact. I can't see that at all. It's a very nice building, but we're just, I'm putting in the houses that are here, which is all along here, all along here. And this is a big parking lot. And where I live, Linden Court, it's Gilson Road, dead end. I live down here, this dead end, with my three kids. And as Sandra mentioned, cars come down not knowing about the dead ends. And they come down and they, and they buzz around. It's a fairly narrow street. And what I'm, another major concern is with the parking, is that they're going to start parking on Linden Court. There's no parking on this side.
There's no parking on both sides.
There's a few at the, at the bottom for my, my tenant. But when cars do park there, you know, you had a tenant that parked up here and he just can't, can't access it, can't get out of these driveways. So I can see that happening when, when the cars come down, looking for a spot to park. And this street gets aligned with cars. And that's a big concern. And again, you can see all the two families, and they're just dropping this in. It seemed to get bigger from the last time. It is just out of place. Again, it's, it's a terrible spot now, and we all want to see something happen. I just, we have agreed. This particular size is just going to be detrimental to a, to a nice little quiet. So we'd love to see something happen, but it's, this is just too big for it. The impact would be too much for our two kids and the traffic.
How's your name, Mr. Brophy?
My name is Josh Yen. I'm the owner of the town Johnson Ave. I bought the house about three, two years ago. I enjoy it because it was quiet, nice area. I lived there for a while. And I enjoy every minute of it. Because it's a, it's dead-end street, neighborhoods are all nice and, and enjoy it. That's going to be taken away from me. Because that's going to be sky, I mean, this big building to be next to me. Whereas, uh, traffic is going to be tremendous. Because you have, uh, cars where it's going to be showing better in here. That's Johnson Ave. Okay, and that's, uh, the place on. For the time being, we have a parking lot in here that you're about fit, 14, 16 cars. They have a problem when they come in to get out. So do I have a problem. So when we get to Hancock Street, or before we get to Hancock Street, on the side of the building of Firestone or with your tires, we have to, the car has to cross the sidewalk to look traffic if it's coming or going. So that's me pushing the people walking on the sidewalk into the street, which is very, you know, dangerous. That side of car, you cannot get two cars in the same time. When you're talking about 160 people, 160 minimum cars going back and forth, where those cars can stop? Besides, we have, I have the right because that's private street. I have a right for my tenant to park right on the street. If there's trash coming to pick up, or snow blower, or snow truck, or a fire department, or any of, of these, there's no way it can cross. Because the street is very small. And especially when you park on the street. Because there's no other place that's part of it. He has a right way to walk into their, their building. But the effect on it is too much. So it's overburdened the right way. They only have the right way to go, not, you know, traffic. This is made for one house next door, not for, you know, building to be back and forth. And we're talking about 14 feet. Where they're going to get 14 feet if this, if this street is, is small enough? If it's, if it's fire department, police department, or, or trash, or anybody who's going to drive, you know, it's going to be really small to cross and go to the, to the, to the parking garage. So how is it going to be two ways? Where they're going to be stopped? If somebody comes in and, and was in the wrong way, how is it going to get it? There's no way it's going to get it. There's no U-turn, and there's no place to move. That just means it's going to be coming into either my property or to that parking lot, which we don't know in the future what will be. And my problem, besides the point two, is my property is going to be disvalued because I'm being surrounded by, you know, everywhere. I am in the middle of nothing. Okay, I've been in 32 years. And to come in all of a sudden, because he knows when they bought the property from that, because it is, I know they paid money for it, I would be more than happy to buy his share of that house next door. And I would turn it down and make it, you know, part of my town. So make it easy for him to, so not be burdened because he spent that, and the, the house is, is, you know, I demolish it and we make a nice. So I'd be willing to work with them as much as possible. But that's, right, it's over built to, for, for an area like that. And I don't know why, you know, we are in a rush. The Quincy, City of Quincy is growing rapidly. It's growing, you know, very much. So, you know, do not go with this one. Many others are going to come in, have the whole area and build something very nice to fit with the City of Quincy. You know, we should not rush into the, you know, decision fast to make it right away for, for. You know, it's going to harm everybody. I don't start to anybody, I mean, not, this is in danger for people, danger for, for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, I'm, I just live at the end there.
Identify yourself, please.
Sorry?
Identify yourself.
John Gavin, I live just, you know, on that lot there, just on the corner. And that just sounds sort of petty to them now, but like, there's two or three things, like, you know, the 50,000 square foot on the 14,000 lot, I mean, that's a joke, to be honest. The main thing, like, that's one about the traffic. But Gilson Road is like a tiny, tiny street. Unless, this is what I said here, you cannot, you wouldn't tell them all about it on there if there's a car coming towards it. You're really good. I don't want to say it, a fire brigade, or a dump truck, or rubbish bins and all that. But I, what kind of fact is being most is, how can they even propose parking on Johnson Ave when it's not even like, it's, it's not even like, it's somebody else's property? But like, would you not think they'd approach in substance, hey, look, you know, if it does go through, is it possible that we can work on something to come down Johnson Ave? Sure, how can they propose a set of plans, take that without knowing it's not even possible? You know what I mean? Not to sound anything, no, but, I mean, that's a huge issue. So like, you know, you could talk about this, I want to know if they want ones, you know, as a gentleman said there. If he doesn't want it to happen, sure, like, it's his land. How, how would this, like, how can they propose it if they don't even know it's possible to happen? Do you know what I mean? Unless they could figure something out, that's, I don't know. But like, it, it's just beyond me how they can spend all this time or money. And, you know, instead of going before the zone, what I'm getting is in that, you would think that would be one of the male consultants to see if it's possible by the law, when you have a space in the lot of Johnson Ave. But how can you propose 17, how can you propose 17 parking spots if you haven't even access to it? Do you know what I mean? Without being moved, no, like, like that one. Do you know, it's a tiny little street, and, you know, it's already hard to get parking there. And I don't know, 160 vehicles a day, dump trucks and all that. It just sounds ridiculous, to be honest.
Anyone else want to speak? Sir, Skinner.
Maybe the other candidates, I'm opponent, bring a large area. Bring the largest they could get their hands on. I can understand better why they didn't, or maybe they conveniently forgot. So I had my attorney make up a small area on it. He actually put parking spaces that parking is allowed outside of the site. All of the concerns for all of the townspeople who are abutters are well-taken. If you take a look at that print and see where parking is allowed or not allowed. And then I urge every single board member to get in your car sometime before the next hearing. Go to Johnson Road.
Johnson Ave.
Johnson Ave, Johnson Road, Johnson Ave. I stand corrected. Go to Johnson, whatever. Get in your car, drive down. Go to the so-called end of the street. It's really not the end of the street. As my attorney eloquently put forth, that the end of the street is really not the end of the street as it's shown in front of you. They had all kinds of pictures, I don't want to take the board's time. But I urge all of you to go down that street and picture a five or six-story, might as well say it's a 100-story building with underground parking for the next 30 stories up. Whatever it is, that street is not equipped to handle the amount of traffic that's going to be generated. The access from Gilson Road will further exacerbate the problem. It won't help the problem by trying to dump out over there. You've almost got the same situation. Those streets, I should say Johnson Road, have, as the case may be, was only designed for three, three particular lots. Whether they're A, B, C, or one, two, or three, that's what it was designed for. To handle that, those particular lots. At a time, I might add, in the 50s, where you didn't have downtown Quincy the way you have it today, nor do you have the traffic that is generated in that particular area. So it's somewhat like downtown Boston in a way. The streets just weren't designed that way. Sure, there's all kinds of things you can do. But in this particular case, when you go down Johnson, come back up. Stop at that light. There's a light there. Now, before you get to the street, you have to be able to look to the left, and you have to take a look to the right. You can't look to the left because my building's in the way. You have to physically go out into, into the sidewalk in order to get a view. And I dare say, if you stop before the end of my building and you get a green light, and you can't see what's going on on the left. If you've got a, a mother with two children, baby carriage, you're looking for problems, people. Because you can't see out to the left. You'll step on the gas, and if you've got three or four cars behind you trying to get out of that site to make the light, to go wherever they're going to go, the fire department and the police department are going to have a field day. And unfortunately, somebody's going to get hurt. Now, I didn't put the building up Sullivan Tyre. That was my predecessor. It's his building. I don't own the building, I'm a manager member. So I have three grandchildren that I take care of, and two children. None of them know a heck of a lot about real estate. But they know they get sued an awful lot because there are problems with real estate. The last thing I need is to have this approval go forth on that building and have somebody enjoy me in a lawsuit because maybe I was a proponent of it. Maybe I didn't voice my opinion long enough, or hard enough, or loud enough. That's what's going to happen. You can't put that building on that site without encompassing and creating more problems for the town. And I dare say, I've been a developer for many years. When I go before a board, I try to put my best foot forward, not only for my particular pocket. Because everybody goes for this. There isn't anybody on the board who doesn't work for this. We all work for it. But when you use the town to enrich your pocket, unnecessarily so, by trying to cram down a development such as this on that particular site, it's criminal. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ken. Seeing that council.
Okay, I have a long list here, so, for the record, Michael Forrest, the boardman of City Council. Just by raising hands, I know there's other people in the room for this project that haven't spoken. If you just raise your hand if this is the project you're here for. I just didn't know if there was anyone.
Did anyone speak, ready?
They had, spoken, not spoken. I guess I just want to make sure if there's anybody in the back, and if you have anything to be connected with. So this started out with a neighborhood meeting. And I'll tell you from the get-go, it was premature neighborhood meeting. Projects weren't really designed. They came to the point where we have an ear, and I got to really vet in and go through this. And as you see, there's been, a lot of changes made with this board and the timeframe, from us starting the neighborhood meeting last fall to where we are today. So one, you know, I think first off, the blight of property, right? We're all looking forward to seeing redevelopment of this property. This is, when this, the Murphy brothers are involving their attorneys, like, can we look at this site? I was shocked. The blight is kind of my, is one of my pet peeves, and this is the worst I've ever seen. I don't know if you've all had a chance to get up and drive the site. I think it's really critical in this situation. So one of the immediate things we talked about was the density. Is this project too dense for this? It wasn't parking compliant when we first started. One of our biggest concerns is parking compliance. Okay, we come back to parking compliance, and now they're out of the store. So that didn't address our density concerns. So that was something right away. Trans-oriented development, I think, from me, a lot of the neighbors, I mean, there's a lot about the term their projects going on with this. We are seeing trans-oriented development projects. One of my constituents reached out to me and called. One of my constituents reached out to me and called, I appreciate you asking the question. You're all talking about transit oriented development, where's the bike storage? Because that's one of the reasons you're able to reduce your parking. So that was raised, we have it and they do have good evidence of storage in their parking, so it's glad to see. There's some positive response to that. Quincy Fire, I know the deputy chief, Joe Jackson, was here, I think he's since left. He was actually on the roads doing the tour that I was doing today. And I spent some different times going in and out of the site because I think it's very important. So Kevin, driven, Gilson Road, Yan Johnson Ave, in and out, I need you all to do that before you vote this project. It's really critical to understand how this project is planned in comparison with access to both of those roads. So, I was actually surprised today that there were so, there was so few cars parked on Gilson Road because that was not typical of the experience I've had. So, one, I think if the board or Mr. Fancis being here could take away what we heard from the neighbors tonight, we've heard at the neighborhood meeting, I've had confirmation with the neighbors, parking enforcement. The other thing I'd like, you know, regular parking enforcement, because if they go into the T, they shouldn't be there all day, it's freedom. Doesn't edge the street. But the other thing, it sounds like immediate need is a no outlet sign. Why do people bother and try and turn down there and turn around? So we can get a no outlet sign, that's, that's an easy ask. But there is no outlet.
There is, but they still don't see it. And there's private school on the opposite side, the schools on one side.
Right.
And those pedestrian classes are there, but they need to have a mentor to, the action, help these guys cross the street because it's too dangerous.
Undrayed.
Undrayed itself, to just cross it over.
So I think, you know, what the parking, traffic infrastructure could use some oversight and some immediate upgrades. So I think that regardless of this project, it sounds that we've been hearing very consistent, those are the concerns we've been hearing, we've mentioned them to the board before, so. Okay, I don't remember maybe a lot of the time, I thought, gee, why would they? So, all right, maybe that was too simple, but let's look at what the signage is, let's look at what the existing ordinances are, so if we can get that brought back to them and make sure that it's enforced. There's a reason that streets are narrow, you can't have cars parking on both sides. Okay. I'm so glad Quincy Fire came in, their letter of concern, I think, just so that you're all aware, everyone of these project documents is posted on my website. I really feel it's important to have good access to the information that you're seeing so the neighbors can understand that project. So I appreciate to have the planning department providing those, get those out to all of the realms, so they're not visiting projects in the street to access documents, I mean, it's quite handsome way to. Let's see, on the utilities, property management, trash and snow, oh, actually, let's go to parking. The residence A in the zoning, so that's one of our big things, I'm really glad, I wish you had reached out to me in a Mansville city councillor, I'll give you my contact information, because I'd love to follow up with you. When this was initially pitched to us, I believe the residence A section of the property was to be utilized for parking and that all of the housing was on business C. Is that correct by these plans, can someone answer that? No, but that was how we were originally led, that was how it was originally introduced to us, a little bit different project back further, right? Was the parking, because how, so that's, just to touch your question, so what I believed at that point was that the residence A section, because I'm a residence A staunch advocate, I don't. This is a non-conforming use, this is a multifamily housing, you know its own residence A, it's a little bit different. But I was under the impression that the parking portion, the exterior parking portion was the residence A section of the site, is that correct, yes or no?
We never saw a plan that showed that way.
Okay, that's how it was described to me, I'll tell you, it was. The residence A portion of the site would be utilized, we know we can't build multifamily yasings, it does have a pre-existing non-conforming use, the residence A section is gonna be parking. So that was something I was looking for. Anyone from the project team want to address that? Whether the section of the site, the exterior parking is a rezé and that whether the building's footprint is within the rezé or not.
The building footprint is within the residence.
By original design, was it?
The original footprint hasn't changed since first dispossessed.
Okay, okay, well, that, I will say that when it was introduced to me, was pitched that the exterior parking was the residence A section of the lot. That was what I remember from the neighborhood very distinctly. Because why would we talk about this in a rezé? And the reason was, the exterior parking and the access was going to be rezé. So that's news to me tonight. This board votes, legal opinion from Jim Timmons and our city solicitor, relative to these legal issues about the road, because that was raised in the peer review. And I think that these, this is the reason why we have peer review, right? Is that we're able to look at this from a independent perspective and to understand these concerns that they're unresolved. So, to me, there's a reason it's in a peer review and what's the response? No, not unaddressed, I think, is an unfair response to the neighbors, particularly now that we're hearing about our property owner. So, I'd like to have that resolved from the legal opinion. So that legal opinion is gonna be the specific of, the actual building constructs over Johnson Ave, right? The footprint of the building is on top of Johnson Ave. Is that correct? The footprint of the building is Johnson Ave within the footprint of the building.
I guess.
So that, I feel, is a matter to be resolved on property access. Okay. Okay, on the traffic review, and I think Dave referenced it, the one sixty, whether it's de minimis, I just want to clarify for you. They were talking about new vehicle trips because of the project, so what they, is one sixty not qualifying the whole street?
No, no, that's, one sixty is new rest of trips. And I think that, to say that that's a minimal impact, when you only have about a hundred and sixty DM, when you're doubling something, that's not minimal.
Okay, I just, I agree with you, it's not de minimis, but I was, thought that you were thinking that they were using that number as the total.
No, no, that's just.
That was how I, how I understood, okay.
No, that's new.
So I agree that because you also have, when you're talking about traffic, they've had the benefit, well, I can't even say this. The blighted property's been vacant, it's been vacant, it's been occupied with vagrants and criminals and illicit activity. But we're not seeing vehicle trips from that on the Johnson, on the Johnson Ave portion. And I believe the other site has been maybe vacant as well, right? Gilson Road is completely vacant. It's just not, well, Karen, I mean, this, we've done the end of this, so I just wanted to be clear on the traffic. What they were saying is, you have seventeen parking spots and this is what's going to generate on Gilson Road. So I do understand that while we're saying it's existing, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming with four units, how many vehicle trips and they are, that property does have the right to optimize its zoning. Or keep its current, it has the right for its current zoning used to continue. Okay. I had some questions about, on the Johnson Ave side, it was commented, there's a multifamily unit there, and I believe Mr. Sheen, that's yours. Does that property have parking associated with it, or do you do on-street parking?
I have the driveway to car, best part is.
And how many units does that property?
Four.
Okay. And then there's the basic community services property as well, they're, they're parking lots. So they have their staff lot, which is the lodge lot, which is the Gilson Road access, and then their families, so the, they do a lot of youth counseling. So the families come in and it's direct building access, and so it's heavily utilized, they do have buses as well as transporting. So there's definitely some vehicle, you know, traffic concerns just on the logistics side for me. The other concern would be during construction, is it going to be contained within the site? What would be the game plan so that you're not impacting these abutting sites? So what was gonna be the site containment and construction equipment? Because I think that's an important concern, whether it's this project or any project, what the plan was for that. So I'm not sure who could address that.
We don't have a construction management plan yet for, and/or housing.
So, for example, a staging area, you would then need to determine a staging area?
Yes.
And it would potentially be off-site because this, this site does not allow staging?
Yes.
Okay.
There could be some staging, show term on the site, but eventually it all happens.
Council, we, we work with the traffic engineer, Deb Finnegan, and she has to have a traffic management plan submitted to her about three months, three months or three weeks before the project gets started, that she has to approve. She looks at all of those issues, especially traffic, construction vehicles in and out, times of day they're allowed to go in and out, where the staging is, you know, how it's gonna impact all the traffic.
So I think for me, is, whether it's this project or whatever project, that this be communicated to the neighbors. I think that one, you know, we've learned a lot of lessons, like, for example, getting timelines on projects and the variables that have changed there. I think it's really important because of this particular site and it's really on top of a neighborhood, that there is communication to look at the timeline and what to expect. So it doesn't sound like this project is near that yet. The trash access, we talked about a dumpster on Gilson and a dumpster on Johnson, as well as individual recycled bins. So one, I want to say, as a multi-unit rental property, kudos on actually offering recycling to your tenants. Because that's not something we see in this community and I hear from rentals all the time, that's an interesting thing they have. Why would you have individual recycling units versus a larger dumpster? I'm just a bit confused on the logistics of that.
Well, the recycling would be by monthly. And it would just be like a city dumpster, city garbage truck pickup and dumping. It could be a dumpster.
Yeah, I mean, I just felt, I know for myself, as a resident, I throw a lot more recycling than I do is trash. So I just thought that was a bizarre concept and I couldn't wrap my head around why that would be the plan. And these dumpsters rolling, I know that that's another complaint up in here, is that everybody else in the neighborhood has a trash truck and there's a time versus we get, we do have rules for our noise orders about what this dumpster pickup could be. So you're going to have a dumpster pickup truck come in on Johnson, dumpster pickup truck come in on Gilson, each for a pickup, and how frequently would that be?
Well, the trash would be once a week, the recycling would be twice a week.
Okay, so one, can we, yeah, I don't know at this point, I think that, why, I don't understand why you want to do weekly, weekly. So I would at minimum request the applicant both weekly. That doesn't, so, very minor of the detail, but to me, I don't want, you know, to be dealing with control issues after. So if we could change that. The other thing is, walk me through the, how you're gonna get this dumpster in and out on wheels? Is it something that the fourteen truck opening, fourteen could open it, does the trash truck drive in through the garage and roll this out? Is it something they manually roll out? Walk me through the logistics on that.
Uh, no, they would manu- manually, uh, it's a two cubic yard dumpster, one wheels, it's approximately thirty inches deep by seventy eight inches long, forty inches high. And they would, outside the garage, where they dumpster, uh, trash truck.
Yep. My interest, what I also know is like, like next to where their entrance will be, so can I access my house when they decide to, they want to do all this, give them the trash? What if I have to leave? You know, because my front door and my driveway will be right next to your front door on Gilson Road. So if you're doing all these things at your front door, I have no access to my front door. There's a road, it's not a hospital. And there is a fire hydrant in the garden on the sidewalk, so I can't even open the glass to get into my house, because they're going to be in the side of my house. Can I help you?
I said, from the plan, what I understand, the building, thirty five from her lot, from her lot, well, the old building right now is on top of it. Right now, it's thirty five feet.
But if the road, it's, I know it's.
So where's the, where's the, where's the, the trash truck that's emptying the dumpster, where's that going to be parked? While all this process of rolling in, rolling out, where parks do that?
I just want to identify, where is your driveway here? Oh, I thought you were.
My driveway is here.
Just to look for the hydrids.
I actually have a board showing street kids back or so on to their property renderings, that's something that people would like to see.
One speaker at a time, please, okay? And actually, I think, Council of Forests, actually finish off.
Okay, I don't have all this concern, because I just want to understand the logistics, like, that's the neighborhood impact that I'm here to advocate for, you know, that's, okay, construction, we can understand, there's a start and an end. This is something that's gonna happen every week, right?
This is the entrance to there. Same, same spot where I park my car. I need to, I need to go here and there, or there. You know, so every time they need to do something with that, with that impact of my driveway. And I am now waiting to get out of my house. Because that's my front door and my parking, exactly where I am. This is me. This is my driveway. This is also going to be the other, this is the road. This is the road. So they proposed to have the driveway.
The house has to stop there, can't go any further?
Can't go any further, because this is where we do it then. So I went up down the street and parked here, I'm right here on the other entrance.
Okay, can we, can we just let the council finish?
Okay, so, so one, let's leave that as the unresolved column, right? Like, we're not, we're not happy with the proposal as. On the parking, one of my biggest concerns is, okay, your parking compliance, one and a half per, you could kind of get to one point seven, you get four spots that can park backcars only. So one point seven's a bit, bit of a struggle, I get that you're there, but I just want to be realistic of what we're talking about. On the parking, one of my biggest concerns was we permit this, it's transit oriented development, we give parking relief, this is parking compliant, great, that's what's being asked by this neighborhood. But then we find, oh, the parking's an extra fee. So what's the game plan? You talked about spot assignment per unit, and obviously one and a half per, so first in, second out, you buy me two spots and all two bedroom units. What's the game plan to manage the parking? And then, are you, is your intention to charge a fee? And that would be my.
Well, these are rent, I don't know the, again, I'm not the developer, but I'm gonna assume that these are rentals and each rental unit can assign a parking space one or two.
I would assume that too, except I've been through too many permanent and seen the results of the Hamilton House on Hickard Street that way predates us all, that they're all too cheap to pay parking and they infiltrate this neighborhood. So the reality is, I want to answer that question.
The applicant has represented to me that the specific parking spaces is specified to specific.
At no additional cost?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like that, if that's something that this project goes forward, conditions to this project. Is that something that is a fair condition to the project? When we're saying these assigned seats, it's not an additional fee, and we're really finding a problem, whenever I was found to ten eighty two Marymount Road, now they're charging a fee for parking. Right, that is what the intention was to the neighborhood, when we asked her for the level of parking that you've gotten relief, so that's a big frustration for us. With that, I feel like, that's above the, density too big for the area. A lot of logistic concerns unanswered. And development, this neighborhood supports improvement in the area. The development has to support the area and be reflective. I really think it's important to understand this particular site. I guess my last question is, because one of the things to me is, well, I might have a better appetite if Mr. Sheen's property was included, right? So he had larger footprint for the size. Has there been discussion about alternative options and other, other buys? Has there been discussion, because I was under the impression there was outreach in addition, for additional properties, so I'm curious. With the abutters?
No.
No, not to your abutts?
No, and I, I, never.
Okay. Attorney, has there been any discussion about purchasing additional, additional landscape for such a dense project?
Come Dave, I mean, I like it because it went off.
Yeah, come forward to it.
So, you know, let me just say this before Dave and Peter, the brothers are here. What I want to talk to you about is, they're both Quincy guys and they're both Quincy, small business owners. So I just want to let you understand that a lot of times you develop firms, this is, the men who are the applicants are the developers team, so, and they're local. So just wanted, they've always been very responsive, and I think part of, with me, is the situation with the bought this blighted property, I've asked, can you tear it down immediately? But because of the bank deal, it has not been able to. But I want to say that you've been, you've been great to work with on this, so I just, if you want to hold, address that question, I just.
Yeah. Anybody, I mean, I have no problem with, I've all been able to get over, I've owned it twice a day, I see you floor today, you always see me in there. I didn't, I mean, you know, just to come up, because I want to keep my word on that they won't be in the break and in, in doing that, because I did kick out, uh, soon enough, and you know that. And since I took over, it has very little power. I know Dave called me once and I told him, what did I did? I showed up, I mean, you have me phoned up, I mean, it's not like we can run from this.
Oh, no, no.
But I did get, I did, before I bought, I bought the, the house there, it was like, it was two hundred and sixty thousand, I bought the, the broken down house.
Yeah.
I called Joe, my next door, and we had a discussion, we had right up for three hours. And I said to him, I would be interested by his parking. And I gave him a very good offer, bought it, and he turned me down, and he wanted one point two million dollars. And it's not worth one point two million dollars, and I don't have that kind of money. But, I mean, I said to Joe, and I took a lie, I checked that, I said, if yours was worth one point two, and I would go on my way.
Yeah.
But he said he's too old, he ain't gonna get that. Then I went ahead and I met the back house. Then I went ahead and I met the back house, three of us, and I made a deal with them. Now, I own the right away on Loop Two from Johnson, you know what I mean? And he has the right away, but now he can't do nothing on the law, because this is his, but I can vote for it now. If I bought it, I could took, I could use that part of it. Now his 7,000 square foot lot is down before, I mean, that's why he's here on that, saying it's going to be upsetting his hope. And I know the gentleman here from Southern State, the last meeting you said you were okay with everything, the only thing that bothered you was not that parking. And that's why we add more parking, right? And the reason why we did two parking was, we're going to put floor one and two for your, your backyard, because I don't want to give any trouble, Dave, or nothing like that, because, being honest, I might even think of moving in myself. But that's another thing we'll get to, but I don't make any promises, because, you know, that's not my, but I was going to put the first floor and the second floor for two units, the two floors, and then the other side for three and four, for the parking, just let them up. Not have 24 cars downstairs, and, you know what I mean? That's what my plan was, to help the traffic. I did go around, I spent a lot of time down there, and I know where you're talking about parking on the sidewalk, turn the gate and stuff, and I have a picture of your driveway, and I can see why people park down, because they think it's a scoop.
Yeah.
You know, I have pictures, and no need to get up and show all the pictures or anything. But the parking is right, I watch them come, and they do park on the sidewalk, and they do go over to the tape. I mean, I, you know, it's not like a lie, but it's something, I think my fault there was where they park, you know what I mean? If I could stop and park there, I would.
Well, you just drove for 20 years.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying about coming down the street there, when people park and stuff, you shouldn't even park on the side lanes. I mean, I understand that. And with the, with the problem with the trash here, I do have 65 feet or seven, 70 something feet of width, the truck could go down there. But it's like, once we, I can't promise the world to yous, but I'll do the best to make them happy. You know, like, taking myself and brothers out here to fight this. You know, I just want to clean that up. But if everything comes down to, I admit, be honest with you, everything does come down to dollars, and my investments and stuff like that, it's not like I make a lot of money out of it, it's a long-term kind of thing, right? And I'd be a part of it. And like I say, we be building it, and we will be taking care of it. I mean, we're not having outsides.
We're just not to think, like, yeah, it's the same 20 years.
Appreciate it, Mike. Will you get back? 35 feet. Okay, I have the council. 35 feet, it would make a big difference.
Okay, so I think, for me, I think I just wanted the board to see there was offers out there, right? So I think part of us was, this is...
But that's not correct, one, one or two.
Okay, we don't need to, we don't need to detail, other than, there was discussion, there was outreach, and I know there's been multiple outreach in multiple different directions up in this area. So I just wanted, for the record, that there's some other things going on here as well that I've been trying to catch and wind up. So I, I think you've heard a lot of testimony today, you've gotten really good input from the neighbors. I think it's really important that the neighbors came, and I really appreciate all of your time in coming here and communicating with me, because it's important, actually, you need to have a good process, you need to get a good project outcome for our neighborhood. So please take all of our testimony into your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Board members, maybe one last comment? Go ahead. Speaking with Chris Carroll, the attorney, I believe the attorney was using the older zoning code. In the Business C District, multifamily isn't a live use, not a conditional use. That was one inaccuracy. The other one is, minimum lot, minimum amount of land per dwelling unit, he stated 2,500, which gave us six units, that's again incorrect, it's 500 square feet per unit divided by the lot size would give us 20. So I just wanted to make that.
I appreciate that, we did, just for clarification on that, so that was something that the city contracted to re-codify our zoning in 2010, I believe. So that was, I think, you know, a big part is understanding the zoning, because that still doesn't give them the right to use the residence A portion of the lot for building, right? So the residence A, if that was fully parking, could be incorporated to it, so this is a really big change to the zoning with building footprint in residence A, and that was not was convinced to the neighborhood. But I appreciate you clarifying that, because 500 square feet was the Business C, I'm here a lot.
Any comments? Go ahead, board members.
Thank you, Council of Forests. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight, because the most important part for me is getting input from the neighborhood. And sometimes we get a little, sometimes we get a lot, but tonight was especially thoughtful and very helpful. A number of times it came up, you know, board members, make sure you go and walk the site. I have. And, and just a couple of days ago, I did, and what I thought to myself was, this project is way too big for the site. And, well, I certainly appreciate the developers looking to redevelop this property, and it sounds like you guys are all in favor of that. And, and that's good, because I'm in favor of that. But personally, and I only speak for myself, I, I only speak for the board at this time, if I were asked to vote on this project now, I will vote no. And so what I would encourage the applicant to do is to work with the council, to work with the neighborhood, and come back to this board with something different. But I also encourage the neighborhood to think about what you want, and, and have some sort of cohesive ask and find the middle ground. And, and so again, I don't speak for the board, but I want the board members to know where I am, and I don't know if they have thought right now, perhaps we could avoid any recommendation from the department at this point, depending on whether they agree with me or not, and if they don't, it's by the way.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you for your comments, and as you can see, the Murphys really believe in this project, and they really want to work with the neighbors. So I know it's been dragged out for a long time, but at this time, we request possibly continuance, so that we can work for the best interest of the neighbors and work in what they have to say. I thank everybody for their time tonight, I thank the board, I've sat on boards, I know the time's spent, but I think there's a lot of positive comments that can be put together, and we can work together and clean up a problem in the neighborhood, and bring something that'll be a credit to your board and a positive for the neighborhood. And that's the Murphys' concerns, they want to do the right things, and they want to be there for the long, long term.
As part of that continuance, Council of Forests will certainly request for a legal opinion. That will give us the opportunity to ask the department. So is there a motion to continue this? So moved to a date certain, June eight?
So, can I ask if, if, so, everybody here is here in June eight, is a date, if that date is not to be, can I just ask, or if we're going to confirm that date, can I ask for a minimum 10 days or two weeks notice? I'd like to be able to notify the abiders. And the change that happens to me with this has been a bit of frustration with just, and it's by design, and it's that the applicant, okay, peer reviews from midnight hour, we're meeting the deadline, but for me, it's about, okay, no permanent names, we're keeping it informed, we're keeping it all on our calendars, and then if it's, oh, I get it from midnight hour, it's canceled, there's anything we can do about it. But if this isn't a go two weeks out, I need to know it's not a go, so that we're not planning it, and then we're going to go into July. I just need more time than the 48-hour public notification.
How about if I personally contact you May 25?
Right, and we'll know it's a go, not a go.
Either way, it will follow.
Is that, is up here, so let's, everybody here, June eight, put that on your calendar. If you're all on my email list, if you're not on my email list, just give me your contact information.
There's still a motion on the table, Council.
Sorry.
So second to the line. Discussion, all those in favor? So hearing continued for June eight.
Can I just give you the neighborhood stat?
Next item on the agenda is continue public hearing for 150 Hancock Street. Site name special permit, plenty more case 215, that's 24. Counselor?
Neil.
Counselor? Counselor King? You're up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a continuation on 150 Hancock Street. Last time we were in front of the board, there were issues of, the main issue was parking, that the, that there were too many units not on parking spots. So we have redesigned the product, we haven't redesigned it, we've just taken two units out. And in that space, it'll be some storage and a community room. It's going to be in the space where those two units were. We also redesigned the garage a bit to, for turning radiuses, removed the elevator and stairwell, to make it easier to turn. The other, so we have, instead of 15, we've got 13, 18 spots. There was another issue with the MBTA, because we were butting them in close, the J Duka called a hearing with the architectural board in Quincy, and it was unanimous that it was loud, it allowed, go, go into the state and they'll review it, but it was loud at the city level, so we're confident that it was just windows, that the, on the windows that could go would have been not many, because of where we are. And we're way above the, the MBTA is probably 15, 20 feet down the trains, so we wouldn't be able to be seen by any of the residential lots, even the garage would be underneath. We've done a traffic study, you should have that, that was requested, and we did that. And basically, it's the same project, a little bit smaller, and some of the things that needed to be done have been satisfied, and I'll give it to Johnson for the structural, architectural items.
Thank you, gentlemen. Members of the board, I'll be very brief, I've had a long night. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mr. Tim Johnson, project architect. In August of 2015, we presented to the board a four-story, 15-unit building with 17 parking spaces, 15 garage, two upstairs, which had a parking ratio of 1.1. And from the board, from the neighbors, the scheme that you see before you, as Bill mentioned, is a 13-unit scheme with 18 parking spaces, which gives us a 1.4 parking ratio. This is a unique site, it's where Hancock Street and the MBTA right away intersect, and so trying to a lot, there's an eight-foot difference between the one end of the property and the other, so we're able to bury a good portion of the garage on the site. As Bill mentioned, we did go from 15 units to two units. I, I, 13 units, pardon me, I, I may have misspoken, don't, that space was given over, those two units, if you were given over storage on each floor for the units, not a community room. There is a common room on the roof, which is accessed by an elevator, as all floors are, which may all use handicap, adaptable. And we did submit a trash management plan, we also submitted a traffic study, which basically said there'll be minimal impact on Hancock Street, and the amount of pedestrian impact will also be minimal, so much so that the traffic report suggests that pedestrian lines are not even needed at this site. We do have a landscape plan, the one, the one element of that landscape plan that the landscape architect, Kate Orincheck, suggested are street trees. Street trees studies have shown slowed down traffic. With, working with the Parks Department, we came up with a six-foot-high multi-stem pine tree, so it'll only grow 69. And then, of course, the stretch energy code, made here too in the city of Quincy, Dark Sky Initiative. And the exterior materials, which I have samples of, the board would like to see, we're using a product called New Cedar, which will be a vertical cedar board, imitation cedar board, it has a 25-year warranty. It's a synthetic product with a baked-on Sherwin-Williams finish. And then, we have fiberglass doors and windows, and that's the basic overview. And I'll let Mike Joyce, the civil engineer, do it.
Hey, Joyce, towards consulting group, civil engineer for this project, just, well, nothing has changed in this project since the last time we saw it. We were in pretty good shape prior to the last hearing. Roof leaders are collected, our stormwater is collected with the roof leaders, directed to our stormwater leaching chambers below the parking area, and the parking lot runoff is plugged with a storm seater, unit that separates the suspended solids and oils. The stormwater is recharged into the ground, overflows into the city system, we've performed test pits out here, and the material's really good. I think we classified this as Group B, but, but it's conservative, I think it's probably an A. New oil-water separator and sewer service, new water surfaces, all the access will be ADA compliant. The only thing that did change in the plan is that as the traffic engineer had asked for some additional details, I think handicap, parking sign details, so we added that to our detail sheet outside of that, so.
Questions, board members?
I know the first hearing, we get concerns about placement of snow or snow removal, has that been addressed? Yes, it has. These are, these would only be seasonal parking spaces here, so as you come in, you can clear the entry plaza for snow storage right here. And then the trash removal, the truck is, the truck is going to pull into that driveway, you're going to roll the dumpster out, and then the truck is going to back out onto Hancock Street. You know, the, the truck would come downwind, if you will, of the curb cut, as what we're suggesting, and then back in in this direction. So it's going back in across the lane traffic. That is what we're looking at now, from whatever board...
Depends on which direction it's coming from, right? If he's coming from the center, yeah, he'd back into the direction of traffic, but not across the lane.
Yeah, he wouldn't be able to make that turn right there. Well, we could look at maybe these two park, these parking spaces are for deliveries, short pizza guy, short term. If these aren't here, he could actually pull in, get back in, and out like that. Can you?
Yeah. The only thing I will say is, I know this site right now receives 18-wheel deliveries, and they do pull past and then back into the driveway. I, I know that's not ideal, but that's what happens now, so I do think it could be done. The only reason I know that is when I was doing the test pits and the truck came over it.
And you were like, what the heck is that guy?
Yeah, I was impressed by his driving.
So Mikey came down, and then he backed right in.
Correct.
That's our answer.
And it is four lanes in that area of Hancock Street, it's not one lane, most of Hancock Street, it is four lanes.
Any other questions, Councilor? Any other questions, board members?
Yes, I have a question. You just described two of the parking spaces of the 18, a seasonal?
Yes.
And a for, for the pizza guy?
Yes.
The residential requirements is, what you were quoting, the 1.4 spaces, that would include those two spaces, am I correct?
Yes.
So if it's seasonal and for the pizza guy, does the resident that's using that space, what do they do with the snow event? And what would they do if the pizza guy is there, and they come home from work? Follow what I'm asking?
Uh, yes, sir. My short answer is, I don't know, but this is a plan in development, and we're flexible to the comments of the board. We do have two additional tandem spaces here available, which we don't show, but we have those available, so there is some flexibility in this parking plan. For where will be put snow? If we don't have snow storage, we would have it trucked out, so they wouldn't be seasonal. If the board says that these have to be permanent spaces, number one, the snow would be trucked out. This parking plaza is 45 feet square, so a pizza delivery guy could pull right in here, run in, and back in and out. So there is flexibility in this parking plan, and that would really be my short answer.
My recollection, when we were discussing snow storage on-site, was, the answer was that you would remove the snow as a condition of the, basically, permit again. There was no discussion as to any lack of permit. Again, there was no discussion as to any lack of permittingcy on those spaces. That's concerning, but we just, we have no objection to making the snow removal a condition.
We could incorporate that into the stormwater operation.
What was that, Mike?
I'm sorry. So we could incorporate that into the stormwater operation, it may explain and then it's recorded with the decision.
And then those.
That's my comment. Again, at one point four, you know, the ratio includes those two spaces. And I don't want to, there's a little bit of a break there. Comfortable with a little bit of a break, but if we take those two spaces out, then we're not where we all intended to be. So I just want to be clear.
So they remain dedicated?
They have to be, they have to remain dedicated.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody would like to speak? Anybody would like to speak? Through the last time, anybody would like to speak? Okay.
I have to pay a couple of questions.
Okay. Staff this.
The city traffic engineers submitted a couple of comments, Mike.
Okay.
One of them was the movement of the utility pole on Hancock Street. There's going to have to be a pole that has to be moved.
That was leftover comment, that was actually one of the other edits. We had the two curb cut layout.
Yeah.
All the utility poles would have to be relocated.
So that was from the two curb cut?
But because we got rid of the curb cut, the utility pole.
Okay, so that's no longer an issue. We did have questions about the garage door itself. Is that, how is it open? Does it open with a clicker or do they have automatically?
It's open with their smartphone. So what you would do is say this is a Coldplay garage door. You go to their website, download their app, and all new cars now have Bluetooth technology. Click on your app through the Bluetooth, Bluetooth, which should have been to the garage door. It opened the door, it has a thirty-foot range, and as you enter, you hit a sensor, the garage door opens.
Are any, okay, all right, so.
What if you don't have a smartphone?
Yeah, you don't have a smartphone or?
My grandmother might not be able to.
We'll make accommodations, I assume, so that every resident who lives living here has access to open the garage door.
Yes, but that, I mean, that's the technology that you're seeing now in parking garages, using your smartphone as the garage door.
What's the delay on that? Would there be any queuing out onto Hancock Street DC?
Well, again.
You have forty-five feet?
Yeah, you can fit, you can fit four cars in here. So as soon as you come up to this point, you hit your app on the smartphone, the door begins to rise. When you pull in, hit a sensor and it goes down.
Deb Bennigan did, or one of the comments we had was to provide the concrete sidewalk and curbing along the property line. Was that included in the revised plan?
Oh, that was, that had been in the plan since the.
It has been, okay.
Yeah, and one of the engineers, DVW's comments is to remove and reset the curb so that it's at the six-inch reveal. So that's how we have it now.
One of the discussions that came up was mitigation regarding the traffic, pedestrian traffic light. And I heard Tim make a comment that there might not need one, but we still feel that's necessary. And we want to make sure that the applicant understands that requirement, that the traffic engineer is requesting fifteen thousand dollar contribution to a fund to repair those pedestrian signals.
We did submit the traffic report by Jack Dillon, not the traffic engineer. But under pedestrian activity, the number of pedestrian crossing at Hancock Street was observed and recorded during four hours in each of Hancock Street intersections. It shows figures and graphs. The volume of pedestrian activity does not warrant the reactivation of the old pedestrian traffic signal.
Yeah, I hear what Jack's saying, but the, our city's traffic engineer and our, the city engineers have determined that they are going to be reactivating that. This is one of the projects.
Pleasure to make a comment. Intuitively, I think I disagree with that conclusion as that side of Hancock and that stretch has not been a residential area historically. And now that we're making this change, I know that every, every morning people are going to be migrating across the Duncanona. And so back and forth, you know, to the train and whatnot. So I'd be much more comfortable with that traffic signal or pedestrian crossing.
We do show the exist, on your site plan, we do show the existing crosswalks, just for your information.
There was, there was one other outstanding issue. We had requested additional consultant review funds from the applicant. We had sent a letter to you some time ago. And so that's going to be one of the conditions, there's two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Plus the fifty.
What, the fifteen thousand dollars, sir? Two different things.
I understand.
I think that's it for me.
All checks get made out to the city.
Oh, there is, there is one other thing. The applicant, last night, or yesterday's Affordable Housing Trust meeting, the, they were expecting the applicant to be there and they, they were not there. So we're going to request that they do get in front of the Affordable Housing Trust to support you as well.
We will do that and the reason that we didn't intend that, didn't leave a message, but it's, Reno is probably going to have a partner with this project. So we weren't sure whether they were going to give up unit, unit or units or pay into it. So that's why we.
But I think that's going to be the decision of the Affordable Housing Trust. So they, they just need the information as to the construction costs of the project.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll do a presentation with them, but it's.
I think that was a.
I just have one additional comment, and it deals with smartphone technology. Is there anywhere, is it available for someone to view somewhere around here or is it just something?
You can just go to YouTube and type in garage door app video, and you'll see it.
But my question is, is it someplace, is it being used somewhere around here?
Oh, I don't know if it's using any of the projects here. I know it's using some projects in Austin. This would be my first time using it, but there is a YouTube video that showed.
Okay, any questions from board? It's board first. It's a motion to close the cover, Tim? Is there a motion or is there a second? Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is the department have a recommendation?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We recommend that the board approves a planning review under transit zoning ordinance, Title Seventeen, Section Ninety-one, and special permit under Section Five point one point one seven of the parking laws, subject to the following conditions. I have, I only have about four conditions. I'll go quickly. The applicant has been advised that they are responsible for submitting two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents to their existing fifty-three G consultant Review Fund. Prior to the final planning board decision being issued, the applicant shall be required to submit these funds to the planning department. Project is subject to the inclusion, inclusionary zoning ordinance. The applicant shall adhere to any recommendations of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee related to onsite units or cashing through of such units. The applicant shall seek approval from the Quincy, City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals or Director of Inspection Services, as appropriate, for any required findings or variances from the City of Quincy zoning ordinance, which are not under the authority of the planning board. And before the applicant shall provide documentation that they have acquired approval from the MBTA to access their site during construction activities. Five, the applicant shall adhere to the recommendations of the city's traffic engineer, including, the applicant shall make a mitigation payment of fifteen thousand dollars that will assist in the engineering, design and construction of a pedestrian traffic signal at a location on Hancock Street between two hundred feet north of Wallace Street and Spur Street. Said payment shall be submitted prior to any occupancy permits being issued. The applicant shall provide a construction management plan that will include a traffic management plan for site work and any utility work within the public way, which shall be submitted and approved by the city's traffic engineer at least three weeks prior to building permits being issued. The applicant shall include, no, no snow shall be removed, I'm sorry. All snow shall be removed from the site during snow events. This information shall be included in the operation and maintenance plan, which shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, along with the planning board decision. The applicant has indicated that trash removal and recycling shall be handled by a private company. The applicant has submitted a detailed trash removal plan. No trash receptacles shall be allowed to be left on Hancock Street at any time. The applicant shall submit a plan to the Director of Inspection Services showing the locations of all exterior wall penetrations, including but not limited to heat vents, dryer vents, HVAC penetration, retaining the building permits. The applicant shall develop a dust control plan to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. The applicant shall submit documentation that construction activities of one fifty Hancock Street will not result in rodent issues for butters. The applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on-site, which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. The applicant shall conform with both local and state regulations regarding noise. Upon completion of this project, the applicant shall submit to the planning board as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rates of way. Plans shall be submitted in a digital format acceptable to the planning board. The hours for delivery of materials during construction shall be determined by the city traffic engineer and shall be included in the traffic management plan referenced in Special Commission Number Three above. The last one is the hours for construction activities will be seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM Saturday. All construction and deliveries shall be prohibited on Sunday unless approved by the chief of police.
I just have one comment on that. With regards to the MBTA issue, we don't plan on accessing that property to do any of the construction.
During, the, the project is right on your property line. Do you feel that your construction activities, including ladders and, you know, equipment staging, won't be on the MBTA?
Wouldn't be able to do it if we wanted to.
Okay.
It's, it's about a two and a half foot to three foot wall. So we, it would just be too dangerous to put anything on that. I talked to a couple of contractors and they, building in the city, you know, they could build something two feet away from another building without accessing the property. I just didn't want to have to try to get approval for something we don't need.
Strike that as an addition. You did mention that you met with the Architectural Access Board.
And that was a positive vote, three to.
We'd like to get that documentation prior to the decision being issued.
I talked to Mr. Duka this morning, he hasn't drafted the decision yet. He said he's going to try to get it to me at the end of this week, Monday and Tuesday at the latest, everyone is all.
Okay, I'm sure those copies are there. And that was our.
Recommendations from the departments, suggestions to the board? Motion to approve with the conditions as outlined by the departments, or a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take a, we're in a great while we, vice chair, if the applicant an opportunity?
We'll take it, we never get them. Yes, I am. Andrea, I'm Andrea.
Hi Andrea, Susan Green.
I think we have met recently in the slide by your office, like, so, six months ago or something. Hi, everyone.
Hi Colin.
Hi Colin, nice to meet you. And I would introduce you to Margaret.
Hey, would you guys knock it out? Garage doors all over this place. Oh, I got a little mod.
Turn off the security.
Okay. We just tried garage doors open across the street.
Thanks again.
Take care.
Vice chairman wants to stand, anybody else wants to?
At this stage, I feel like I should say good morning, right?
We've taught this, just so you know. Well, we're at the very, very old room.
This is nothing, you know.
Yeah.
Back in the good old days.
You got kicked out of the library.
Lights, the lights.
Thanks, Sarah. Yes, that's true.
Well, with this open, I'm just going to read the legal act. This is in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter Forty-eight, Section Eleven. We give the planning board a hold of public hearing on Wednesday, April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, at ten ten PM in the first floor conference room, Quincy City Hall, thirteen oh five Hancock Street. On the application of Bates Avenue Realty Trust, Twenty Tower Terrace, Wareham, Mass., Route Two Five Seven One, for the site plan review under the Quincy Zoning Ordinance, Title Seventeen, Section Nine point five, one, site plan review. The applicant proposes the demolition of an existing three-unit residential structure and the destruction of a new three-story, five-unit residential parking building. The applicant also proposes the demolition or renovation of the existing onsite garage to provide two upstream parking spaces per unit, landscaping, drainage and other site modifications. Property contains nine thousand fifty-nine plus or minus square feet and is located at eighteen Bates Avenue. Subject property is located within the Residence B zoning district, shown in successive plan. Four, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. The applicant, you're on.
Thank you. My name is Andrea McKnight, I'm the attorney for the property. The owner is actually part of the Wareham zoning board, so he could not be here tonight because he was working, much like you. We're here today, we've already been before the Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals. We've been granted a variance, special permit and a finding. What we are essentially looking to do on Bates Ave., to give you the short synopsis, is there is an existing building there. It's an older building. We are looking to knock the building down and essentially rebuild the same exterior structure with very minor changes. There's an easement on the property, we're going to retract the new building outside of the easement. But in general, we're looking to pretty much stick with the same footprint and rebuild the same exact building. We, again, have already been approved for the five units on-site, so we're here today to talk about the site itself. We've submitted plans, but I'm going to quickly turn it over to the engineer.
Good evening, my name's Brad Repold, J C engineer, also out of Wareham. As you see on the submitted plans, currently existing building, front and front porch, detached garage and parking area. Most of this site, a good portion of the site is currently paved or concrete patio driveway. We're proposing, as Andrea said, to take the building down and build on pretty much the same forefront. There's a minor expansion in some areas, removing some areas to get out of the existing sewer easement. There's a town easement or a town sewer easement that basically bisects the property in half. And we want to take the disinstruction and pull it outside of that easement. The proposed five-unit building is in a Residence B district. Requires one point seven five parking spaces per unit plus point two five to get to the two units. So we are providing ten parking spaces. The site will also have, you know, a walkway that wraps around the building. Provide some landscaping in the back and along the front. We do have a plan submitted, it shows the landscaping. And overall, the previous coverage on the site is basically increasing about four hundred square feet, very minimal. But we are providing some drainage to capture a good portion of the parking area. We did receive comments from various agencies, a town consultant, the engineers, building department and the five department. The five department had no issues, they said this building is, is as expected and the building itself will be sprinkled. So we will be running a new. So we will be running a new line to provide fire protection in this building. We're not providing, there's no elevators, but we do have stairway system in the building just inside off-parking area, and there's a three-floor deck and walkway stairway system providing secondary access to the structure. Structure itself, similar style, similar materials, it's in the neighborhood. The zoning board preferred either hardy plank or brick siding. Preferred to go with the hardy plank siding. PVC trim. All the decks and stairs will be wrapped in white vinyl, white PVC. The decking itself composite, so it's going to be a low maintenance, something that requires little maintenance to the structure itself. The five units lays out, two on the first floor, both two bedrooms. Two units on the second floor, both them two bedrooms. And the fifth floor, or the third floor is a three-bedroom. Again, we did receive ZVA approval on the variance for the unit count. And if you have any questions, just try to keep it brief. We're aware there are some technical issues on drainage. They want some additional information provided. We evidently should be doing that.
Can I just have the committee counsel, what would the variance please so bring density?
The density is a lottery. Lottery for dwelling unit. We have a table on sheet two, I believe, or sheet three.
Setbacks.
Yeah, well setbacks included. But we did pull away from the property lines as much as we can. By larque wise, 4,000 square foot per unit.
We essentially did the dance between the planning board and the zoning board and upon speaking with Margaret, the original plan was we go to zoning board first, we get approval for the building, once the building's done we come here, and then we get the parking. And we played around with the parking, but we got our two units. Trash is going to be, rollaway trashcans are stored on the backside of the building. There is a pretty substantial hill that separates the rear side of this property from any butters on the backside. So that shouldn't be an issue per se, they're elevated up, the rear neighbors are. And snow removal was one other issue that we talked about. We're looking at either hauling away snow, or we're going to do a heated driveway that should help alleviate some of that.
Question from board members.
The only question I have is, I don't believe I saw a landing gate on that. I thought it was a tree. I don't think I saw that in my package. I think it just walk us through what it would look like, landscape.
Well, currently, it is pretty much void of most vegetation on the site. There is currently an evergreen tree right in this area here. We are proposing to plant between these two neighbors, or this neighbor. Right now, there's currently a stockade fence that runs through, so it's already has good screening. Again, the site along the back, the rear property is about, in the ballpark, like six feet higher in grade than this site. And they have a stockade fence, stockade fence on top of that. So there is a decent amount of screening as it is right now. We just have various trees around the site. This is going to be a little seed, a yard area or play area for the residents, and just some trees around the site, some shrubs.
There's a fence on this side as well, to help separate that neighbor from.
Seems like a nice improvement on the landscape.
Definitely is. It's a small lot, but we've got as much landscaping on the site as we could.
Any other questions? Okay, my understanding is representative that I made, we've still got, waiting some comments that need to be addressed. So I didn't take a motion to continue this public hearing, so...
We can probably get this one done by May 11. We have gotten comments from most of the city staff and our peer viewer. We're just waiting for responses from the applicant. Once we get those, we should be able to move forward with this.
I speak, then.
Are you calling?
Yes. And I'm excited. I, I don't know if I really need to read all of my comments. You've received...
I have, I think, yeah.
Do you have any questions or issues with any of them?
No, but it seemed pretty much straightforward. We did, we're asking waiver on the traffic study. I think it was actually, I mean, the town engineer, but I think that's the only waiver that we had requested. It's only five units, it's relatively small.
Okay, so there's a motion to continue to May 11, so a second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Pat.
No, thank you. So you're looking for a written response in connection with the suggestions that were made?
Yeah, what we require is for you to take each of the comments that you've received from the peer viewer and the city engineers and respond to them line by line. Whether they can be, whether they can be done on the plan or whether they need to have some kind of verbal response.
Okay. We talked to our board council. He went around and spoke to the neighbors, and we talked to the neighbors. We received no opposition at the zoning board appeals. Okay.
Oh, that's right, you were at ZVA, right?
I spoke to the board council.
You did. Yes. Yeah, seemed to agree.
So you're on the 11th of May?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you propose for your first, housing production?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, the housing production plan is not ready to be presented at this time. We had some... I know, she got... Maybe why they're not on the line.
Okay, and then the business that I do, council orders. 2016, to establish a public hearing date, proposed ordinance 2016-075, which is amending the City of Quincy zoning law for affordable housing by removing the provisions of 7.1. Quinsey law shall not apply to urban renewal uses.
Mr. Chairman, we just need to set a date.
Yep.
To not hold a public hearing at that.
Yeah. We're going to do it in June?
No, it'll be one of our regulars. Do we want to hold that public hearing for the, the UEDP change in May?
The ordinance, proposed ordinance change. I wish you have a timeline for when that needs to be heard, so would it have to be...
Yeah, six to five days.
We need to have a date that it was introduced. Yeah, so we have to have it, we should have it in May.
We should have it in May. I don't think I can wait until June.
And we can get the public hearing those up by that time.
Okay, so May 11, 2016, a little bit earlier than this one. Twenty-two votes, you guys, but second, all those in favor? Okay, the next proposed ordinance, 2016-77, which is updating the Center Urban Revitalization Plan, 2RDP, Section 12.02, Section 3. Section 2D Land Disposition Amendment, LDA definition update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and members. My name is Robert Stevens. I'm the urban renewal planner here for the City of Quincy. Before you is two amendments that were proposed by the city council. Before I jump into that, I wanted to alert you that in your packets, you should have received the approval letter from the DHED on our last or most recent urban renewal amendment. That was amendment number three. That was before this board back in February 10, I believe. That matter was communicated back to the city council, with the city council approved amendment three as it was proposed at the time. That went on to the state, and this is the approval letter from the state. At the time the city council approved amendment three, councilors Palucci and Finn submitted the three council orders. One was the organs change, which this board is accustomed to receiving, and there's a procedure and a process to schedule a public hearing. The other two dealt directly with the actual herb text of the urban renewal plan. Now, it's a little, this is the first time that the council has acted to amend the plan without a plan that was originated, or an amendment to the plan that was originated from the planning department or from the mayor's office. The first proposed council order, 2016-77, suggests to, or proposes to add a new sentence into the urban renewal plan under section, excuse me, under section 12.02, subsection 3, section 2D of the urban renewal plan, that it would state, any land disposition agreement must be approved by the director of the Department of Planning and Community Development, the mayor, and the city council. That's a brand-new sentence that would be added to the plan. The planning department has no objections to this proposed amendment. Land disposition agreements by nature are reviewed by the city council, and obviously they're generated out of the planning department. And the mayor's office, for this board, I'm sorry, it's, this board isn't recognized as having to review that. However, this board is the designated authority to review certificate of consistencies, which is the zoning review for urban renewal projects. Part of those reviews include the urban renewal covenants or land disposition review. So this board already has the ability to review those. Again, the planning department has no issue with this proposed change, and we would even recommend an affirmative recommendation be made and communicated back to the city council on this particular order number. The second order number, 2016-078, is very similar in language and is looking to amend the same subsection, I'm sorry, the same section of the urban renewal plan, 12.02, subsection 3, section 2D, and it states, a brand-new sentence to be added. Any urban redevelopment covenant must be approved by the director of the Department of the Planning and Community Development, the mayor, and the city council. The planning department has reviewed this one. Currently, any urban renewal covenants, which are urban renewal agreements between the city and a potential developer that does not include city Quincy land, can opt into an urban renewal covenant. What this would do would add the city council as a reviewer of such land agreements. That's not currently in place. After consideration of this proposed change to the amendment, it's the department's belief that if this were to go forward, potential developers that would benefit from the urban renewal program would see the necessary, the need, to then have to go to a second review board after negotiating a deal with the mayor. They'd have to go also negotiate with the city council. We think that this would force developers to go back to just the straight zoning, and the city would not be able to manage that development within the urban renewal plan as it relates to parking, utility contributions, improvements, and so forth. So it would be the department's recommendation that, a negative recommendation be given to council order 2016-78, because this proposed amendment would not be based on the local survey, which is a term used for the urban renewal plan. It would actually more likely result in folks not participating in the urban renewal plan. And this, and this amendment does not conform with the comprehensive plan for this area again, which is the urban renewal plan.
A question for you.
Yes.
The city council or a couple of members of the city council are asking the planning board to make affirmative recommendation on this second case. Why, why isn't anyone here tonight to argue on behalf of the city council position?
I'm not certain. Typically, this, well, this matter was communicated by the city clerk to our department to be put on this board's agenda. We discussed it with the administration, with the solicitor's office, and they gave us the green light to go ahead and present both of these orders to this board for review and discussion, a deliberation and possible vote on whether they affirmatively or negatively recommend these.
And clearly, the council, sorry, the council gets copies, each one of the councils gets copies of whatever you have.
Correct.
Yeah, based on the evidence before us, I'd make a motion if I could. Unless there's any further discussion on this topic from the board members. I make a motion on council order 2016-078 to issue negative recommendation to the city council and the mayor on the proposed council order 2016-078 that will add the following sentence to the definition of urban redevelopment appearing in section 12.02, subsection 3, section 2D. Do you want me to read it into the record, or can I say as, as a new word by Mr. Stevens or as, run into the record?
Could you read it into the record, please? And let me just, you know, preface that. You know, there's, this board in urban renewal instances is charged with making two findings. You know, finding that any proposed amendment to the plan is based on a local survey, and that finding that, you know, any amendment to the plan conforms with the comprehensive plan for the city as well. So, yeah, if you could read both of those, that, that's, you know, would be recommendations.
Should have made that part of the motion, that, that part of the motion would be that the board has determined that proposed amendment is not based on a local survey, and the board has determined that the plan does not conform to the comprehensive plan for locality as a whole, and to reiterate with the language, any urban redevelopment covenant must be approved by the director of the Department of Planning and Community Development, the mayor, and the city council.
Okay, so the motion made, discussion, excuse me, second, quite the second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Until the 2016-077. To go back to the initial council order 2016-077, I would make a motion that the board has determined that the proposed amendment is based on a local survey, and the board has determined that the plan does conform to the comprehensive plan for the locality as a whole. Therefore, I'd like to make an affirmative recommendation to the city council and the mayor to approve council order 2016-077 that will add the following sentence to the definition of land disposition agreement appearing in section 12.02, subsection 3, section 2D. Any land disposition agreement must be approved by the director of the Department of Planning and Community Development, the mayor, and the city council.
Is motion made, so a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any other business?
Thank you, sir.
Hearing none?
I did. I did have one, one small piece of business, just because I saw that Ms. Hoffman had passed out in the janitor for the rest of the year. I just thought that to get out, because our meeting are jam-packed, I will not be here in August. So I will not move that meeting, or if, if everybody can commit, then that's fine, but I just wanted to be clear that I won't be here in August, so, so we don't need to move.
I will not be moved.
We have to.
Okay, so it sounds like August is not going to be able to be a meeting.
Okay.
Or, or...
Do you want to have a meeting at all in August, or do you want to take the month off?
Well, it may be dictated by what's...
Yeah, I mean...
I would may, I would hold off on that, just until we can determine.
That's fine.
Not that I won't miss one.
Well, can you be here on August 10?
August 10, I can, every week.
Yeah. What I'd like to do, then, discuss with these two.
So we go the third of the seventeen. Yeah. Propose new dates, and we'll send out yea or nay.
How is it? Motion to adjourn, can't be. Second, nowhere to go.
We honor our...